Good morning and welcome to the public hearing and public meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission today, May 6, 2025. We'll begin this morning by taking attendance. I'll ask our General Counsel Mark Silverman to call the roll.
Chair Carroll?
Here.
Vice Chair Bland?
Here.
Mr. Chapin?
Here.
Mr. Chen?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chu?
Here.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Here.
Commissioner Luthe?
Good morning again and welcome to our public hearing and public meeting of May 6, 2025. We're going to begin this morning with a public meeting item presented by the Research Department, and they are proposing a site, an interior site for an interior designation. And so we'll review that. And then we'll move to the Preservation Department's public meeting agenda to review an application that has already had a public hearing and for which we've already taken testimony and commented. And the applicants are back today with a revised proposal in response to those comments. And then we will move to the public hearing agenda to review new applications for work on designated properties. And this meeting is being held in our hearing room at 253 Broadway on the second floor and being held via Zoom and livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings. With that, I will turn it over to our Director of Research, Margaret Herman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item number one is LP 2684, the Modulater Building Apartment Duplex at 246 East 58th Street in Manhattan, Block 1331, Lot 128. The item proposed for designation is the proposed designation of the Modulater Building Apartment Duplex, a late modern work by Paul Rudolph built between 1989 and 1994, consisting of the entire third and fourth floors, including the entrance hall, north and south living rooms, kitchen, balconies, and bedrooms, as well as the historic fixtures and components of these interlocking double-height spaces, which may include but are not limited to the floor surfaces, wall surfaces, ceiling surfaces, lighting fixtures, and attached furnishings. Presenting today is Matt Postle.
Good morning. I'm doing the arrows. This screen just came up.
Oh, okay.
I didn't touch that. It just came up. So, okay. Good morning again. The Modulater Building's Apartment Duplex is an important late 20th century modern interior by the American architect Paul Rudolph. On February 25, 2025, the Landmarks Preservation Commission held a public hearing on the proposed designation of the Modulater Building Apartment Duplex as a New York City interior landmark and the proposed designation of the related landmark site, item number one. The hearing was duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of law. Four people spoke in support of designation, including representatives of the Paul Rudolph Institute for Modern Architecture, DOCOMOMO U.S., Historic Districts Council, and the New York Landmarks Conservancy. No one spoke in opposition. The commission also received 10 written submissions in favor of designation, including submissions from the New York City LGBT Historic Sites Project and the Iconic Houses Foundation. Located in Midtown Manhattan on the south side of East 58th Street near Third Avenue, the apartment duplex occupies the third and the fourth floor of the building, which was designated an individual landmark in 2023. The proposed interior landmark includes the entire third and fourth floors outlined in red, including the entrance hall, north and south living rooms, four bedrooms, balconies, kitchen, and bathrooms. The Modulater Building was constructed in phases, starting in 1993. Planned as twin rental apartments, the apartment duplex received a temporary certificate of occupancy in June 1994. These units were first leased to tenants in 1996. Following Rudolph's death in 1997 and the settling of his estate in 2001, his partner Ernst Wagner moved into the building, combining the north and south units into a single apartment that also functioned as headquarters of the newly established Paul Rudolph Foundation and later the Paul Rudolph Institute for Modern Architecture. Rudolph purchased the property in February 1989. He and Wagner, who co-founded the Modulater Lighting Company in 1976, developed a plan to rebuild the existing 1960s structure as a sales showroom and residential space. Rudolph was a leading and sometimes controversial figure in American architecture during the latter half of the 20th century. He attended Auburn University and the Harvard Graduate School, where he developed a distinctive modern aesthetic using industrial materials like concrete and steel. Rudolph moved his thriving practice to Manhattan in the 1960s during the period when he headed the Yale School of Architecture, which he designed in 1958 to 1963. A prolific designer of exquisite private residences and major public buildings, he was also an inventive interior designer who created a significant group of multi-level spaces that were praised for their distinctive forms and daring spatial complexity. The all-white apartment duplex has a fragmented open plan divided by partial walls and partitions. Significant architectural features include the tile floors, two staircases, exposed metalwork, fireplaces, lighting fixtures, and built-in furniture. In a 2004 article titled "An Architect's Last Word," architect Joseph Giovanni wrote in the New York Times, "Inside and out, the triumph of the designs that Rudolph pulled off the kaleidoscopic complexity with wallboard and off-the-track rack metal studs and joists. For Rudolph, the richness of the materials didn't matter. He aimed at the same spatial qualities regardless of materials. It was space itself, Rudolphian space, that counted." Traversed by floating open stairs that rise and turn, as well as cantilevered balconies and landings that project over the lower floor, the New York Times critic Jason Farago wrote in 2018 that "these elegant interlocking spaces provide a corrective to the view of Rudolph as a brutalist heavyweight." A highly significant late work by Paul Rudolph, the Modulater Building Apartment Duplex today is home to the Paul Rudolph Institute for Modern Architecture and is open to the public by appointment and through regularly scheduled open houses. This extraordinary space is the only publicly accessible interior by the architect in New York City. The Research Department recommends that the commission vote designate the Modulater Building Apartment Duplex as an interior landmark.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions from Matt or Margaret on this one? We've had our, you know, we calendared it and we had a public hearing and heard some very supportive testimony. Okay, so if there are no questions, would anyone like to comment on this? Vice Chair Bland?
All right, I will. I've already been quoted, I think, earlier about this building and about Paul Rudolph, so I won't go on about it. But I did become an architect because of Paul Rudolph and went to Yale to study with Paul Rudolph, but he had flown the coop by then and had moved from New Haven to New York. So Paul Rudolph is, was, and is a seminal figure in my own personal architectural journey. I've been in the Beekman Place House where he lived and met with Paul Rudolph. Actually, at that time, it was a contentious meeting, and I won't go into all the reasons, but we finally figured out that we weren't opposites. We were, I was trying to do things at the Yale School of Architecture building that would bring some of his spirit back, which had been so lost in renovations, earlier renovations. I'll just conclude by saying, I think even always, up to these stairs, they were never legal. I mean, you always had to have a rail of some sort, but Paul Rudolph, of course, was famous particularly for these floating steps that cantilevered out of walls, seemingly unsupported and completely. But, and I've walked up one or two of them, and they're quite scary, actually, but they are beautiful. I'll leave it at that.
Yes, Commissioner Chen.
I was just talking to the Vice Chair before the hearing started about how, given the housing crisis, and this is an example of a housing that New York City needs about his megastructure, he's also well-known for his, and some of those, a lot of those are not built, so.
Yes.
There's a really extraordinarily great exhibition on right now on Paul Rudolph's, one of his last works, I think, of significance, which is the Tuskegee Institute Chapel, which he is acknowledged to be kind of a partner with, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, I should, because he was under accredited with being Paul Rudolph's partner in this design, but a black architect from Tuskegee on the faculty. Anyway, anybody in New Haven, I think it's up through the end of June, anybody heading up that way, be sure to check it out. It's a really significant and beautiful and thorough exhibition of this chapel and the making of it, the use of brick, which Paul Rudolph never wanted to do, but his partner down there suggested that it be brick, and Paul Rudolph accepted it, et cetera, et cetera. Anyway, it's a terrific exhibition. I highly recommend it.
That's great. Thank you very much. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Bland, for adding those terrific, you know, personal moments. And the Tuskegee sounds truly wonderful. I'd love to see it if I could. I just wanted to say, you know, this is a beautiful space, and it's so nice to see an interior landmark being offered to us because so many, you know, so many just because of adaptive reuse and other considerations are not available. So it's terrific to add this to our portfolio.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Chu?
I just wanted, is this working? Oh, okay. Add that if you look at this work and Paul Rudolph's work, especially this one, the care to the human scale and detail are evident. And I would just make, you know, the parallel to our landmark buildings that are 18th and 19th century. Again, the craft and detail and care, I think, are something we appreciate.
Nice observation. Commissioner Jefferson?
I've always been a great admirer of Paul Rudolph, and particularly his large work. And this small scale, the language he uses in his large work, he takes it down to a smaller work, and intricately, just perfectly aligned. He's able to master two scales at one time.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. And I do want to give a special thank you to the Paul Rudolph Institute for Modern Architecture. They've been extremely, not only helpful, supportive, and cooperative, but enthusiastic, and have provided information and access to the space, which has been invaluable. And this is, as they've explained, going to remain a publicly accessible interior. And so is one of the last public, or the only publicly accessible interior by Paul Rudolph. We thank them for that as well. And so with that, I think we'll make the motion. Vice Chair Bland, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the Landmarks Preservation Commission designate the Modulater Building Apartment Duplex Borough of Manhattan as a New York City interior landmark because of its special character and special historical and aesthetic interest and value as part of the development heritage and cultural characteristics of the city, state, and nation, as set forth in the Designation Report of LP-2684 dated May 6, 2025. I also moved that the Borough of Manhattan tax map, Block 1331, Lot 128, consisting of the third and fourth floor duplex, including the fixtures and interior components of these spaces, which may include but are not limited to the columns, joists, stairs, wall surfaces, floor surfaces, mirrors, lighting fixtures, attached furnishings, doors, railings, and attached decorative elements be designated as its landmark site, as described in the Designation Report and illustrated in the attached map.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Yeah, yeah. This is our 124th interior landmark and, you know, joins the collection of our very special interiors that are publicly accessible and by virtue of their volume, space, and attention to detail and finishes and fixtures merit this important status. So we're delighted that this is our newest interior landmark. Thank you, Margaret and team. So we'll now move to our Preservation Department public meeting agenda, and we'll turn it over to Director of Preservation, Corey Harala.
Thank you, Sarah. And good morning, everyone. Start today's Preservation Department agenda with public meeting item number one, LPC 25-01278, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1216, Lot 104, 167 West 85th Street in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. This is a Romanesque revival-style row house built in 1889 to 90. The application is to construct a rear yard addition. This was last presented at the public hearing of January 14, 2025, and no action was taken at that time. The staff will present the revisions to the proposal in response to your comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. Anu Kandl, Preservation Staff. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of West 85th Street and Amsterdam Avenue in the Upper West Side Central Park West Historic District. This item was initially presented at the January 14 public hearing. The proposed work included constructing a rear yard addition, and no action was taken at that time. The Commissioners did not object to the construction of a rear yard addition. Some Commissioners expressed objection to the alignment of the fenestrations. In response to those Commissioners' comments, the applicants have revised the fenestration pattern to align the lintels as shown in this before and after elevation. Okay, there we go. Some Commissioners did not object to the addition as presented. Other Commissioners did express concerns regarding the massing at the top floor. In response to those Commissioners' comments, the applicants have revised the addition to address the massing, setting back the top floor, as shown in this before and after section. Additionally, the top floor was revised in terms of material, and the applicants are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think that, Anu, can you just maybe go to the, is there a photo of the interior of the block? Right. And so I think what I'm trying to get at is that the change in the material at the top floor of the addition is something that the commission approved at another four-story addition in this block, and they modeled their revisions after that other approval. I know if you can find the photo that shows the building that they used as a model. All right. And so when we saw this, we commented that the, okay, this is the model. This is the one that the commission previously approved and that the applicants used as the model. If we can go back to the contextual elevation.
What is that material?
That's a good question. All right. So, Anu, can you tell us what the material is at the top floor that they've changed it to?
It's an aluminum panel.
All right, so painted aluminum panel. And then the other thing that we noticed when we were looking at it last time is that the window heights on the rear addition were lower than the other lintels, the corresponding floors in the adjacent buildings. And so they have added a transom to align those lintel heights in response to our comments. Yeah. Yes, that's right.
Does it indicate the amount of setback? Action doesn't. Didn't appear to be a dimension.
No, it's just set behind the parapet, which is, I believe, what the model does. All right, Commissioner Ginsburg?
This is probably more a question for you, Sarah, which is, why, what is the logic in approving the metal panels in the previous submission?
No, I think I'll ask Corey to respond to that because it came out of the comments last time.
Yeah, I think similar to this proposal as it originally came forth, that applicant, and by the way, that was actually two row houses, I think, being combined, maybe even for multifamily. So that's why it was two L's back to back, and then they built an additional piece on top of those combined L's. But I think that, similar to what's being contemplated here, that applicant had come in asking for a four-story addition. Some Commissioners were uncomfortable with it at that height, and they thought there was a middle ground in setting it back and changing materials, in part to also respect that it was not part of the L, so it read as something independent of the L's, and maintain that reading because there are a number of those still left in the block. So that was the reason for the material change and the setback.
However, I agree with Commissioner Ginsburg. I'm not sure that painted aluminum is exactly what we would normally think would be an appropriate facade. At least, I don't think it would be. And I'm not sure that the model is, I mean, I think setting it back and changing material is fine, but just wonder about the material itself.
Just as a reminder, these are also non-visible rear additions, so I think with that often comes more flexibility in some of the design decisions that were suggested and made. But I don't know the particulars of if that's what the commission asked for, if that's what the applicant proposed, and the commission just approved it at that time.
Yeah, all right. Do we want to hear from the applicant? Okay, let's open the proceedings. Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to open the proceedings?
Yes.
All right. So, okay, Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion? Or all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Jackie, do you want to come up and speak a little bit about the change in material?
Good morning, Commissioners. Jackie Puduvallan, Preservation Consultant on this project. I just want to say the owner would absolutely be open to a change in material for that top floor of the addition. And I welcome any other questions you may have.
All right, any questions on that?
No question, but do you want to propose something, or should we tell you what we think?
Well, awesome. You know, since we were going by direction of the staff to replicate something that had been approved previously in this block, we just hadn't talked about any other options, but I believe this owner would, who unfortunately couldn't be here today or listening on Zoom, but I believe we have the architect should be on Zoom. I know they'd be open to any other material that the Commissioners are comfortable with.
I appreciate that, and I may be a Commissioner of One, thinking this way, that aluminum is not right, but maybe we should find out. Others should speak now.
Shall we move to our discussion, Commissioners? Okay. So, and I'll just note for the record that we did receive letters from the Historic Districts Council and Landmark West, which were shared with you prior to today's hearing, sorry, today's meeting. All right, so let's begin our, yes, Commissioner Chu?
I just have a question. When there was the slide showing a previously approved addition?
Yeah.
What was the material of that?
I think that was the aluminum, and that's what they copied. Yep.
Okay, that's why this elevation proposed looks exactly with.
That's right. Okay. All right. So we'll begin our discussion. Again, this is a rear yard addition we saw a while ago, and at that time asked them to raise the lintel heights to align with the other windows, I guess, on one of the buildings, and to rethink the reading of the massing at the top floor by setting. And the applicants have followed a model of another approval in the block, which set it back and changed the material. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Chen, would you like to start this one?
Sure. I mean, I think it's an interesting observation. I was just thinking myself, if it's not this material, is brick preferred? In my mind, I think part of the reason why I think we asked the applicant to take a look at it is because, you know, in this way, there's a delineation and makes it a more modest addition than if it's all brick because it's blended in the background.
Vice Chair Bland?
Yes. Well, I said already, I certainly support the change of the mass, the setback, et cetera, and the change of material. For me, the question is just what is the material? I think it could be a lighter brick. It could be another kind of metal, you know, turn or something like that, or even stucco, I suppose, nicely detailed, any of those. I just think, I just have a hard time approving painted aluminum. It seems like that's what we try to rip off buildings and to expose the original behind it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
I I think that moving the floor back is good. It's great. And, you know, I can understand Commissioner Bland's issue, given that there's an upper floor beyond it. If there weren't, and also just the material in general, that perhaps another material would be suitable. But I don't know if there's a consensus on the substitute material, though I guess they could work with the staff on that. So I guess I'll hear what others have to say. I could be, I'd like to support the proposal and see it go forward this time. So we'll see.
Okay, Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I also think that the reduction of the mass by setting it back and changing its material do help it read as an addition as opposed to an original piece. Also gives a sense that it reduces its scale. I guess in terms of comments of the finish of the upper level there, that setback, I would, I would think that the color should be more recessive, so darker, whatever it is. If it were to be a metal of some kind, I would say that maybe a standing seams ink is something that we've often used that looked as a natural material as a brick. But again, I think that the applicant should make a proposal here, and then we can.
All right. Okay. Or we can just, you know, I think we could delegate that to the staff, to work with the staff to do a different material. Yeah.
I did just want to also note that this applicant is proposing a charcoal color, not the sort of creamy color from the prior approval. So to your point earlier about it being darker, possessive, that's what's being proposed here.
I also just want to add that that color has a relationship to the proposed window frames, too. So if the window frames aren't in fact a dark color, that would be better.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with Commissioner Chu on his critique.
And Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree with other Commissioners in general. The massing, et cetera, is fine. And it may be with, if they had done a rendering with the real color, we would have thought it was all right. But working with staff, I think they should solve material color issue.
Okay. All right. So I think we can do an approval with modifications, that they continue to work with the staff to re-study the material and color. And I think, you know, in the material inherent in that is thinking about the details. So whether it's standing seam or something else, but not just this multi-jointed aluminum panel. Okay, so just to re-study the color and material in consultation with the staff. Okay. Okay, so just to re-study the color and material in consultation with the staff. Okay.
In the matter of LPC 25-01278167 West 85th Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, the application is to construct a rear yard addition, noting the building's style, scale, materials, and details among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side Central Park Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features that a proposed four-story addition, rear yard addition, would not be visible from any public thoroughfare, and will be in keeping with the depth and height of other rear yard additions found within the block, and therefore will not overwhelm the buildings or diminish the central green space. That the design and materiality of the rear yard addition, featuring brick cladding, metal window, and door assemblies, and a setback four-floor clad in dark gray aluminum panel will be in keeping with the residential character of the building and other buildings in the block, that the metal balconies will be simply designed and a and of a modest scale, and the open quality of the installation will not overwhelm the facade, that the proposed work will not distract from the special architectural and historic character of the Upper West Side Central Park District. However, we recommend that they work with the staff in terms of the materiality and the color.
And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
With eight in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the next, we'll move to our public hearing agenda.
We'll start with public hearing item number one, LPC 25-07995, an application for an advisory report in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1111 Lot 1. Central Park Scenic Landmark, an English Romantic-style public park designed by Frederick Law Olmsted and Calvert-Vox, and built in 1857 to 1858. The application is to remove a masonry plinth in the perimeter wall, install a statue and ironwork, and replace paving.
Use this, click on the screen to make it work. It should be used.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Kendall Henry. I'm the Assistant Commissioner for Public Art at the Department of Cultural Affairs, and I will provide some background information on Victory, a percent for art commission by Vinnie Bagwell and her team. Victory will be located at the park at Fifth Avenue and 103rd Street, across the street from El Museo del Barrio, the Museum of the City of New York, and the New York Academy of Medicine. Victory will be replacing a statue of J. Marion Sims, a 19th-century gynecologist who conducted horrific experiments on enslaved women. The statue was originally located in Bryant Park in 1897, and was relocated in Central Park in 1934, and was there till 2018. In 2017, the city convened a Merrill Commission to examine the controversial monuments and public art through the city. Through research, outcry from elected officials and the general public, the commission recommended that the city remove, relocate, and replace the Sims statue. The Public Design Commission unanimously agreed. As a result, the Committee for Empowered Voices for Healing and Equity was formed, comprised of city agencies, elected officials, local stakeholders, and activists, to go through a process to select an artist who will replace the Sims statue. This is what we're here for today. The plinth which held the statue will be removed, leaving a gap in the wall that will replace the statue. The wall does not go through the plinth, so as you will hear from Vinnie Bagwell, the artwork will incorporate some of that. And with that, I hand it over to Vinnie Bagwell. Thank you.
Good morning. I preserve the history of African-Americans by creating art for public places. I'm a 2022-2023 inductee for the Who's Who in America for Sculpture. I'm a representational figurative artist who uses traditional bar relief techniques as narratives to expand my storytelling. I've won numerous public art commissions and awards around the United States, including the Americans for the Arts inaugural, Jose and Darlene Perez Prize for Civic Engagement.
Good morning. I'm Bryce Turner, President of BCT Design Group in Baltimore, Maryland. We're like a 75-person firm there, do a lot of work up and down the East Coast. Next slide, maybe? My passion is ground-level engagement and activation type projects, commercial and cultural, activation of street-level opportunities, and I've been working with Vinnie for, since 2004 on various commissions. Very passionate about that. We also do a lot of commercial design work. I've had the pleasure of working with Vinnie on this commission, and my colleague here, Dan Dunston, will speak next. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Dan Dunston. I'm a registered landscape architect. I specialize in site planning and design development. Now, Victory is an intentional reclamation of space from a monument that historically upheld oppression. Thus, we surveyed a five-minute walking radius to discern the surroundings to enable the design for Victory to be an engaging, thought-provoking public artwork that enhances New York City's cultural landscape.
Our proposal's design incorporates elements that evoke both the pain and the strength of the women who suffered under J. Marion Sims' medical experiments. Using symbolism and storytelling to engage viewers on a personal and collective level, Victory was designed to function among us as an educator and a pioneer for change. The golden flame in her right hand represents the power of enlightenment, and her staff crowned by the Ark of Asclepius and circled by a wreath represents the unending circle of life. Victory is a site-specific design that focuses on the story of the women who made J. Marion Sims' achievements possible. It is meant to be experienced in the round. I want people to walk around her. Thus, bar relief narratives are carved on the surface of her garment. The continent of Africa is cut away from her heart. It represents the motherland's ruinous loss of more than 12 million people over hundreds of years. And 12 women are silhouetted around the top of the skirt, representing the resilient, nameless. This gives you an idea of what the sculpture looks like from every angle. The three women, the ones we know the names of, that would be Betsy, Anaka, and Lucy, are highlighted on the front. There's a slave ship schematic tattooed on Victory's back, which reminds the viewer of the inhumanity of transporting enslaved women like spoons in a drawer. On the right side, braille reads "My soul looks back and wonders how I got over", and "Primum non nocere", meaning "First do no harm", is on the left side. This is the detail of the polished bronze eternal flame that rises out of the right hand. These are the specs. The figure is nine feet tall with the wings, it'll be about 14 feet. This is bronze with a black patina. The sculpture will rest on a low, 18-inch-high textured rainbow granite ellipse pedestal with a slice off of the front, which will bear the title Victory in laced and bronze. Rainbow granite is, the multicolored hues reflect the diversity of the people that were impacted by Sims' legacy and the broader community reclaiming the space. It's also the hardest granite and the most durable.
The 30-foot-wide by 10-foot-wide deep sunburst motif in granite pavers represents the vital, universal light of living democracy, forward motion and rising aspirations. Pavers and slabs of Masabi Grey, Academy Black, and Rainbow Granits will create contrast in the graphic pattern to enhance visual interest. Non-corrosive extruded aluminum pipe will be installed between the granite pavers. The wall in finish will be managed by the conservancy. So when they take out the granite plinth that's currently there, we will have to amend the wall in return. The ADA compliance space behind the sculpture was designed to enable and encourage viewers to engage the artwork. An ornamental wrought iron gate will inhabit the space that occupied the former sculpture. These are samples of the granite. We intend to use Masabi Grey, Academy Black, Rainbow. We will also be using bronze lettering inlaid into the granite. Then you see an illustration of the section of the extruded aluminum pipe, it will be held in place by anchor bolts. All materials are simple and durable.
The overview comparison between the Sims and the Victory installations, Victory's footprint will remain within the inner cobble. It will not extend into the central hexagon walkway. These are existing examples of public artworks pavement treatments that extend into the parkway sidewalk. And these are examples of in-payment applications throughout Central Park. These are public artworks placed after landmarking. The diversity of the art in Central Park enables Victory to take her place among them. It's inspired by the Vanderbilt Gate. My choice to create a wrought iron gate for Victory is symbolic. It represents transitions, openings, and movement forward. The tradition of blacksmithing and wrought iron gates have deep ties to African-American history, particularly in the South, where they were used in cemeteries, plantations, and churches. This material choice subtly references resilience, memory, and the endurance of black communities. Note, the gate will not function as an opening into the park.
The arching 14-foot-high gate is designed to draw the eye up. The side railings aid in expanding the width of the eye sweep to balance the intake of the visual presentation. In addition, the density in the design of the bottom portion will help make climbing prohibitive. Central Park boasts four ornamental gates, Osborne, Lehman, Levy, Vanderbilt. This will become the fifth. I would also like to note that the gate will not touch or anchor into the historic wall. It will be separate, and the end caps of the wall will be made to look like all of the other gaps in the wall throughout the park. The see-through gate also enables people to view the artwork from inside the park, sparking inquiry. Central Park Conservancy will lead the effort on the horticultural treatment behind the gate so that it is in line with the broader park planning scheme. These are, there we go. This is what I was talking about earlier. The granite plinth will be removed. This is the former, for the former sculpture. Then the wall will be amended so that it looks like the same gaps in the wall throughout the entire park.
These are examples of other wall openings on Fifth Avenue and the new opening at 64th that was approved by the Landmarks Preservation Commission and completed by the Central Park Conservancy.
This diagrammatic section shows the relationship between the park's topography, the existing landscape, and the three 10-foot zones of the parkway. The open-air gate and the ADA-accessible intermediary space behind the sculpture provides transitional space for pedestrian movement and observation of the artwork.
Transforming the experience of place informs viewers that artistry is a powerful and useful tool of social transformation, one that is capable of condensing our thoughts, distilling our minds, and renewing our aspirations.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, Commissioners? Any questions? No? Okay, yes, Commissioner Goldblum?
The Conservancy will be handling that. Does the Conservancy want to answer that question?
It'll be his.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Diane Jack here. I'm the Vice President for Program Management at the Central Park Conservancy. The intent is to match, there's a photograph from East 64th Street, I think, on the next slide, to show a recent that one in the middle. That was the recent cut that was made on the wall, and the intent is to match that.
Michael, could you hold just for a second? Your mic is not being picked up. If you could use Everardo's for now, and then maybe we'll move you over here afterwards.
Okay, second question. Of the gates that you mentioned to Central Park, are any of them ceremonial and non-functional as yours is proposed to be?
I don't know. Says that none of them are ceremonial.
Okay, so this would be, this would be a unique feature of your design. Is there, it, the design seems to reference the, both the medically-focused location of the city outside of the park right near here, and also the previous statue that was here of a doctor. Is there any text or other way for folks to understand the intention of the relationship to the medical kind of theme, apart from the sleppious symbol?
There will be signage. Again, it's a discussion that we're having with Cultural Affairs, and so that will help viewers to orient themselves to the story. So, yeah, there'll be some sort of support content that helps them to know exactly what this is about.
Awesome, thank you.
Commissioner Chu?
Actually, that was related to Michael's question, is would that be placed somewhere? Mention of the history?
I'm not exactly sure where we're going to put it. We haven't really nailed that down with Cultural Affairs, but it is open for discussion as we're the best place for that to go. But, you know, we will think it through in terms of figuring out what's practical and effective.
And that would then come back to us at a later date.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, let's see if we have any public testimony. Come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Thompson to take us through the remote participants.
Thank you. Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to offer public testimony? Please use the raise function. And you will be promoted to panelist, after which we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have some minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Claudette Brady. Claudette, we ask you to unmute yourself, and you can turn on your video and state your name for the record.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Claudette Brady. I am Executive Director of Save Harlem Now. Save Harlem Now supports the installation of the Victory statue. However, we feel the elaborate wrought-iron screen detracts from the simple beauty and provocative nature of the statue, and we ask that the wrought-iron work be reduced in its design or simplified in its design. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Zainab Turan.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Zainab Turan, and I'm speaking on behalf of Friends of the Upper East Side. Friends Preservation Committee is pleased to support this application. The Victory Monument by artist Benny Bagwell stands as a meaningful tribute to African-American women who suffered at the hands of Dr. Sims. This monument is a powerful and important work of art, and we commend this initiative by New York City's Person for Art Program, City Parks, and the Department of Cultural Affairs. We also commend the beautiful ornamental wrought-iron work and the sunburst-pattern pavement. These elements provide a fitting and dignified backdrop that enhances the monument's presence and impact. The craftsmanship and design of these elements contribute to the overall artistic statement and create a space for reflection and remembrance. Friends believes that the Victory Monument is a valuable addition to the landscape or cultural landscape of New York City. We fully support the installation of this monument alongside Central Park Wall as it serves as a reminder of a bitter past while also honoring the strength and resilience of African-American women. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Karen D. Taylor.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Karen D. Taylor, and I am the founding director of While We Are Still Here, a heritage preservation organization based in Harlem. I am here as an individual to voice my unilateral, passionate, unbridled support for Benny Bagwell's victory, which in my humble opinion is an extraordinary work that venerates our Black female ancestors who suffered the pathology of Marion Sims M.D. and through this bodily suffering, unwittingly and without their permission, contributed to the world of gynecological and obstetrical science. Ms. Bagwell, a masterful sculpture whose works make it clear that she channels the ancestral imperative, and this is to be heard and seen and honored. Ms. Bagwell, a masterful sculpture, has with Victory created her magnum opus, so to speak, and will enter the annals of history as the first African-American woman to have a sculpture on Fifth Avenue, an honor that she deserves. I unilaterally support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lucy Levine.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HGC is so happy to support the removal of the Sims statue plinth and the introduction of this beautiful new Victory statue to Central Park. We note that because the previous plinth was set back into the park and the proposed screen and statue are not, New York City is actually gaining back park space at the same time as we are getting a beautiful new work of art. Our Public Review Committee thought that the Victory statue would shine even more brightly if the surrounding context was more deferential to the sculpture itself. For example, the wrought-iron screen behind Victory and the ground-plane paving at her feet could be simplified. We look forward to Victory taking her place at the park. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Megan with Landmark West.
Hello, Commissioners. Megan Fitzpatrick, speaking on behalf of Landmark West. The Landmark West Certificate of Appropriateness Committee would like to acknowledge that opportunities for impactful art in spaces as iconic and visible as Central Park are incredibly rare. This proposal represents not only a rare artistic opportunity, but also a civic one, a chance to meaningfully engage with history, memory, and public space in a way that is inclusive and thought-provoking. The replacement of a monument commemorating a deeply troubling chapter in medical history, one that involved significant ethical violations and suffering, is both necessary and admirable. The original statue symbolized medical progress achieved at the profound expense of humanity and dignity. Replacing it with a piece of public art that invites reflection and dialogue is a step towards honoring the individuals who were harmed and acknowledging that history transparently and responsibly. This is not a gesture of erasure, but a thoughtful act of reckoning and reinterpretation. That said, such a change demands a delicate and robust interpretive framework. We strongly hope that the site will include comprehensive and well-considered interpretive elements, contextual, educational, and accessible, to help the public understand the complex history that underpins the new work. We urge that as part of the proposal, there be a clear and committed maintenance plan to care for the artwork. The sculpture's materials, particularly the wrought iron and bronze, will be subject to environmental stress and human interaction, and it's vital that they are preserved with integrity over time. Lastly, although the subject matter is troubling, we recognize that the removed statue still exists for its educational value. In that same vein, we do hope that parks will consider retaining the soon-to-be-removed base for a complete record. Our committee fully supports the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Okay. Oh, hi. Okay, I was a little-- okay, I just lost my script. One second. There we go. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society in New York. Now, Olmsted and Vox were adamant in their objections to the presence of sculpture monuments and memorials in Central Park. The problem the designers foresaw was this, that whether the sculpture was to be commemorative of a great achievement, a sorrowful loss, or an inspiring idea, the effect would be the same to focus on the human condition. And Central Park was supposed to be the opposite of this. It was to be all about nature, where it was to be a place where people could forget human affairs, and the battle to keep sculpture out of the park was lost almost from the beginning. But those who are stewards of the park today need to understand the origins of this idea because it should inform every decision about what is appropriate to Central Park, even beyond sculptures and monuments. Now, regarding this proposal, the situation is mitigated because the work is largely outside the park wall. In addition, there was a previous sculpture here, and we will not comment on the artistic or iconographic qualities of the proposed work. Those are properly the purview of the Public Design Commission. However, several features of the design and its materials affect the scenic landmark in problematic ways. Now, and these are well within the LPC's purview. We believe that it is unprecedented to create an opening in the park wall behind a sculpture where there is not a park entrance. It increases the effects of the sculpture on the park proper, and it is an inappropriate meshing of the worlds outside and inside the park. The historic park wall should be restored, or a new section of wall should be designed in coordination with the sculpture. The few metal gates that exist in the park are all entrances. It would be unprecedented to have a metal work that resembles a gate where there is no entrance. The proposed wrought-iron work behind the sculpture detracts from the sculpture itself by its scale and fussiness. It contrasts, not in a good way, to the simplicity and solidarity of the historic park wall. We also fear it will not compare favorably with the historic Vanderbilt gates just a short distance away. We believe the decorative paving treatment proposed in front of the sculpture is also unprecedented for the park perimeter. Some modifications to the design of the historic cobblestones and hex pavers can reflect the sculpture's base. However, the existing pavement materials, simple form, and continuity around the perimeter should remain largely intact, as it has been for over a century. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak? Please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Boards 7, 8, 10, and 11 recommend approval, and Manhattan Community Board 5 waives its right to public review due to its distance from the project. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So I'd like to ask you if you'd like to respond to any of the comments we've heard.
We appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I mean, I think there were comments about the iron work as it relates to the statue. And in my mind, and the way that you articulated it in the initial presentation is really the two go hand in hand. And really, the iron work is part of the art here, is the paving. Do you want to just sort of remind us how those two elements relate to each other and work together?
Purpose of the sculpture, of course, is to reverse the narrative. Rather than focus on J. Marion Sims, we are focusing on the women who made his achievements possible. We're also trying to underscore the resilience of enslaved Africans, particularly in this instance, women. And so, again, the iron work is there because there's a space. That's the reason. I mean, if there was no space, I would not have asked for a space. But also, too-- my original gut reaction to this quote-unquote "clean sheet of paper" was that I wanted this carpet to look like it had always been there. So again, we understood that it was going to be difficult to close that wall gap and make it match. Stone is really hard to match anyway. And so, trying to fill in the gap wasn't really an option. So then the question is, well, what are we going to do with the space? And I love the Vanderbilt Gate. I love wrought iron. I lived in Baltimore for-- well, in the Baltimore area for 10 years, and it's littered with beautiful, beautiful wrought iron. I love that medium. And so, it gave me an opportunity to express my creativity in that way. And again, knowing the history of wrought iron and blacksmithing, I thought the two went together well. I'm understanding the people who say that it's fussy. It's fussy on purpose. The people who say that it's detracting is like, no, not really. And also, too, this is a rendering. The actual wrought iron itself will not be that contrasty. And then, of course, you've got scenery behind it. You'll be able to see into the park. I thought that that was a good idea. Originally, I had asked to do landscaping behind it because, again, I understood that the Conservancy Gardens is in that vicinity. And again, I wanted it to look like it was intentional. And so, that is my purpose for designing it this way. I don't feel like I want to change it, and I really hope that the Landmarks Preservation Commission respects and understands my intention and that you affirm it. I would greatly appreciate that so much. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you very much for that. Commissioners, any final questions? All right, let's move to our discussion then. Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. And Commissioners, we are-- this is an advisory report. The Public Design Commission will be reviewing this as a public art-- piece of public art. So while we do not comment on the content of the art, I think it was extremely helpful to hear the inspiration and the story and the significance of the art. And what we will look at is the proposed removal of one plinth and the new installation in the context of the scenic landmark. So looking at how openings are treated. And the applicant is showing that they will finish the end of the walls like the ends of other openings are finished elsewhere in the park, around the perimeter. They're proposing wrought-iron installation right behind the sculpture, which, you know, there are other wrought-iron gates within the park. And while this is interoperable, it is, I think, in that spirit. And-- but most importantly for me, as I've heard the presentation and understand this, I really think that the sculpture and the paving really are-- work with-- and the gate, all three work together to tell the story and are all three equally part of this art installation. So I view it that way. And then, in terms of how the opening is treated and otherwise integrated into the park, I think those are the kinds of things that we'll talk about as we talk about the effect on the scenic landmark. I also would note that the transparency of the gate allows for the view of the statue from within the park, which I think is important to the vision of the piece, is sort of in-the-round view. Commissioner Chapin, would you like to start this one?
Thank you, Sarah. I was actually in charge of the Monuments Division many years ago as Deputy Commissioner of Planning at the Parks Department. And at that time, we instituted a policy that monuments that were new monuments would have some kind of maintenance agreement and care, you know, taken-- guaranteed, so to speak, because many of the monuments that we had acquired had no such agreement and therefore were not in great shape. So in any event, I'm very pleased to see this presentation. I fully support the strong artistic and social statement of the work. And personally, I think it's a beautiful work of art with great impact. To address the issues, I think that the removal of the granite block pavement and the-- and other elements that are-- the, and other elements that are not original to the original park, but where later installations is totally appropriate and will not damage any important historic fabric. I think that the paving is actually appropriate throughout the park. There are different paving treatments in conjunction with artwork and other elements. And I think this, in terms of the materials and colors, is appropriate, as well as the base. And I was anxious to hear what the artist had to say about the ironwork and whether she felt that it really supported her artwork and resonated with it in an appropriate way. So I'm just treating the gate itself as part of the artwork from my perspective. And from that perspective, I can find it appropriate, certainly. And I'll just say one more thing, that throughout the park, there are, there's an extremely diverse collection of monuments and statues for those who have wandered through them. And this is, I think, a wonderful addition to the collection, and much more so than actually many of the other random accretions that we acquired over time in the park. As was said, perhaps there was no intent for monuments and statues at that time, but that's happened throughout parks and became part of its fabric. So it's part of its historic tradition at this point. And of course, the park is like 843 acres or so, and it's, can certainly accommodate some artwork. So I can fully support this.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Chapin, for that. I think that provided a great backdrop to how we were perceived this proposal. I agree very much with what she said. I think that the sculpture is an attractive symbolic expression of change, empowerment, reflection, and a constant reminder of the past. I do think it's very important that there is something added to explain the story. I think it does. The piece itself does cause you to reflect, but I do think some explanation is, would be great to give more information on what this is about. In terms of the actual proposal and the elements of it, I would agree that the gate is a part of the piece. As I look at it and the continuity of the Central Park wall, the low wall that goes around, every moment that does interrupt it is a moment to stop and pause. The whole point of it is to create a moment of change, even in the examples that were shown, what was there before, and also the example of the Richard Morris Hunt Memorial, is a masonry stone moment that continues the masonry of the wall, but it does create a big interruption and a big moment to change, and it has transparency. In some ways, this is a wrought iron version of that, as I see it. It is a frame through the wall to stop you, to look at it and reflect. The wall is continuous on either side. This is really just to catch your notice. I do think it's quite sensitively and detailed in its approach. I think that the paving, I'm looking at the paving as basically just a carpet in front, as has been done in other examples here. And I actually think the way that it works with the transition line of the walking surface of the tree line does integrate quite well. It doesn't stick out. It basically takes that space that's already occupied as a zone and fills it with this piece. So really, the only part that I think was somewhat controversial is the opening in the wall. But as I explained, I see it more as a frame for the piece and a part of the piece and does do its job, which is give you just a slight moment of reflection along the continuous experience.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
When I was reviewing this over the weekend, I thought, why all this precedence? Why looking at the park? Why, this is at the edge of the park. You could do whatever you wanted. And then I realized that what the artist did was something really profound, is going in, looking at the elements, and recreating it in a new way. And it works really well. I think the solid sculpture against a screen wall, always dynamic, always... The only issue I have, and it's a personal one, is a victory sign. Because I'm not sure what that means in this context. I mean, victory to what? Victory, question mark? I don't know. It's just personal.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Can you hear me? That sounds good. Cool. Okay, great. Okay. I agree that this is an important upgrade from a malignant statue with a malignant message to a much more uplifting one that's more suited to its time. So I think that that's wonderful, wonderful change. I think, so I think the removal of the granite base of the previous sculpture is fine and appropriate. I think that the commitment to have the wall ends terminate in a way that is consistent with other wall end terminations in the park and not as rendered is another appropriate thing. I think that the, I mean, I share, I shared Everardo's curiosity about the word victory. And that's why I asked the question about the text, you know, having explanatory text associated with it. I think that that would help to address that concern. In terms of the gate, I think that the notion of a fixed gate, it's tricky. You want this to look like an open grill work backdrop to the sculpture, but not a place where you should approach it, shake it, try to get into the park, and fail. So I think that has to do with the design of the gate. I think that the use of wrought iron and the way that the wrought iron focuses the viewer from the back on the head and kind of that plan of the slave ship in between the wings is very, very nice and interesting. So it does tie the two together. But you might look at modifying the grill work design in such a way that it doesn't suggest that people should kind of come up and shake it and try to get in. You could look at taking the base of the wall across the opening, just so that, you know, either even if it's, you know, maybe with the granite of the statue, maybe with the material of the wall. There are things I'm sure you could, you know, this very capable team could come up with. In terms of the paving material, I have no concern about the design, which is kind of radiates from the statue and is consistent with it. I do have a little curiosity about the use of aluminum in a wear surface like that. And I worry about the 100-year horizon for such a material. And I think that bronze or stainless steel might be better. Salt pitting aluminum, I think, might be a concern. And it is a softer metal than others. And it's also a hollow section that was shown in the section. So they might consider a different material for that, just from a wear perspective. But other, in general, I think this is a wonderful occasion. Oh, last thing. The Central Park Conservancy should look to modify the landscaping around the back of this so that it can be viewed and enjoyed by the public.
Which I think was described as the intent. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I agree with my fellow commissioners, and so I won't repeat most things. I think that the concept of the paving so one can go around the sculpture is really important because the sculpture is meant to be seen in three dimensions. And the concept of the gate, given that the existing base of the removed statue was added in the '30s, one has to do something, the point that you couldn't just recreate the wall and have it match. And I think the view into the park will add to the strength and agree with the landscaping. And the final thing, it would have been nice to have had the text integrated now so you didn't have to come back. Because I think, as a number of people have said, the text explaining it is really important. But I can fully support this.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Yeah. I'm in agreement with a lot of the comments. I think this is a wonderful addition. The monuments and the statue in Central Park historically has been, there's been a lack of representation, especially women's contributions. And I think so, this is long overdue. And also the continuum, walking down Fifth Avenue, where there's the soldiers' monument or the sacrifices. I think this is a moment for us to pause. And I think Commissioner Goldblum's point is well taken. I think maybe it's a misnomer to call it a gate, is more to me, to respect your artistic representation as a backdrop. It's more, the way I view it, it is integral to your thing. And I think it would be wonderful if the Central Park Conservancy and the upkeep of this piece of artwork can let people know a little bit more about, you know, other than just the name. I think some sort of tie-in to the description and why this came to be and the context. I think that will be, that will be wonderful.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bland?
I think it's very hard to contain one's thoughts about this to just what this, this commission has purview over. I think this is one of the most, I'm just almost hitting my 17th year as a commissioner. And I think this is one of the most emotionally charged presentations and applications that I've seen in those 17 years. And I want to congratulate the team, but also Vinnie Begwell, and a most moving presentation. Perhaps one of the most I've seen, most moving presentations. The softness of your presentation, I think, somehow is radiant with the extraordinary piece of sculpture that you're presenting to us, even though I don't have control over that at all, apparently. I had to say it, though. So I agree. I don't need to prolong all of this discussion. I really wanted to say what I've just said. And I think I do agree that the screen, the pedestal, the paving, and the piece of sculpture itself is all one thing. And I hope that the Public Design Commission agrees with that, because I guess they have more purview over it than we do. But I look forward to this. I think it's going to be one of the more, most visited and successful pieces of sculpture that we have in our city.
Thank you very much for those comments. So I think we can issue a, or make a motion to issue a positive report. There were some comments that sort of addressed more sort of functionality and the durability of materials. You're welcome to think about those as you continue to develop it and move to the Public Design Commission. But I'm delighted that we can make a motion to approve this today.
Thank you. In the matter of an advisory report, Borough of Manhattan, LPC 2507995, Central Park Scenic Landmark. An English Romantic-style public park designed by Frederick Law Olmstead and Calvert Box and built in 1857, 1858. Application is to remove a masonry plinth in the perimeter wall, install a statue in ironwork, and replace paving. I note that in 1873, the Central Park administrators developed guidelines for the placement of monuments, with a preference for locating these at park entrances within the perimeter walls and at the literary walk. Then in 1934, a bronze statue of Dr. J. Martin Sims, originally located in Bryant Park, was moved to this location upon a new granite plinth. And then in 2018, upon further examination of his career, the statue of Sims was relocated without the plinth to Greenwood Cemetery pursuant to the recommendation of a mayoral advisory commission on art, on city art, monuments, and markers. I recommend that a favorable report be issued, finding that the replacement of granite block pavers and the remaining early 20th century granite base with new public artwork will not damage or eliminate any significant historic or architectural features, that the installation of the new artwork will be consistent with the historic design intent for the park perimeter, where sculptures and memorials punctuate the walls, that the new artwork will be well scaled to the site and in keeping with a variety of artwork at the perimeter of the park, including the nearby historic Vanderbilt gate, in terms of its placement, scale, materials, and the inclusion of a sculptural figure, base, decorative paving, and ironwork, that the sides of the historic schist walls exposed by the removal of the existing stone base will be neatly finished to match typical treatments at the side of cuts elsewhere at the perimeter park walls, and that the work will not detract from the special character of Central Park's scenic landmark.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Eight in favor, none opposed. The motion passes.
It's approved. Thank you very much. Then we'll move to the next item.
The next item is public hearing item number two. LPC 25-09619, an application for a binding report in the Borough of Manhattan, Block 1, Lot 111, Governor's Island, Building 19, in the Governor's Island Historic District. This is a Victorian vernacular-style officers' quarter designed by the Office of the Quartermaster General and built in 1891 and altered in 1902. The application is to modify entrances and install windows, decks, barrier-free access ramp, steps, entry canopy, and site features.
Good morning, Commissioner's staff, viewers. My name is Mark Gardner, AA Noma. I am the principal at Jacklitz Gardner Architects. I'm working with Trust for Governor's Island.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Hilary Zhao. I'm here on behalf of the Trust for Governor's Island. I'm the senior project manager on the design and construction team, and I'm here to support a presentation by Mark.
Ooh, technology. So I'm here today to present 19 Nolan Park on Governor's Island. Just to give context, we are on the north side, the historic district of Governor's Island, and the Nolan Park District, which contains officers, former officers, housing, wood-framed, and masonry structures. The, so the context here, again, Nolan Park. We have a number of structures. We're working on 19, this is an application for 19 Nolan Park, which faces Nolan Park and on the backside, Evans Road and the parade ground. You can see also up in the corner, 4J. So it has a direct relationship to that historic view corridor. In looking at the project, we did quite a bit of research in trying to find historic photographs of the original look of the buildings as far back as we could go. They were, they're all, as you could see, all a little different. I will get into that. All the buildings within Nolan Park have sort of different character, though at some point in their history, in the 1930s and the 1950s, and again in the 1990s, especially in the 1990s, there were, there was an effort to kind of standardize them with some detailing and elements. But again, the, the character of the campus, the cultural campus, we have a number of different building types. Among them, Building 20, which we also worked on... Among the building 20, which we also worked on, and building 19 are among the largest buildings by square footage. But then you have a number of building types, the wood framed houses, the masonry block houses, the Admiral's House, the Governor's House, the block house that, that exist on the site. The Trust for Governor's Island uses Nolan Park for a number of, you know, for cultural programming, for outdoor events. They use, the houses are used by nonprofits as commercial spaces for offices. And usually on the ground floors and on the grounds and within the landscape, they do programming that speak directly to their missions. So just to give a snapshot of this, the building 20, which we did, which was approved by this commission was, had some work done. It's now, it now has new tenants, the Billy and Oyster Project and the Galvezon School at NYU. And split on both sides of the house. We removed the garage, restored the front porch. The front porch had some of the similar detailing has 19 does, as some of the other houses do, which is that sort of standardized 1990 stuff that was sort of placed on it. It has a different character. This, this building 20 was in, one of the newer houses that was done by newer, I meant, among the last developed on the site. And so it actually has a lot more, the detailing of it is a lot more formal. You can see here the accessible ramp that we added, that has pickets on it that responds to that more formal approach of the house. This is the current state of 19. We noted in the, there's a stained glass window, which we are looking to maintain as part of its landmark status. And then to talk about our design strategy, our approach to this, we're looking to rehabilitate the structure and turn it into commercial office as much as we did with 20, provide public access. So that's for staff that are working there for the public programs. And so they're going to be, they're going to really be two entrances, really sort of from the Nolan Park side, but also thinking about the Evans Park side and the parade ground. And how do we start to activate those spaces? So we want to better integrate the building with the landscape and with the surrounding context. We want to provide equitable access. So by that, I mean if we're having activities and programming that are meant for the, the field, the parade ground and the fields on the Evans roadside that we also are responding to, and the Nolan Park side as well. We want to create a sense of openness to the public in that so that this building is again accessible. We want to upgrade the building systems to meet contemporary building codes, which is the challenge of really working to keep the historic character of the building while making these additions and upgrading it. This is just a timeline of some of the additions, things that have been added, taken away with the building. I do note that the designation, the landmark designation, 1996, of course. But a lot of things were sort of added over time to this building. Here's its historic condition, some early photographs. You see the, at the top of the porch, that decorative element that was added didn't, did not exist. That was added much later. And then we have this 1902, the original historic plan, which we've, we've looked at. And you can see it here on a visible portion, the visible portion of it on the existing plan that we have. So this is what we're looking at is, this is the existing conditions of showing some of the original footprint of the building, some of the additive elements that have occurred on the building, the garage, which, there was a garage on 22, on 20, which we removed, the back stair extensions at the service, what was considered the service side. And I'll reference that in a, a way that we are trying to make sure that the public is aware that this building is open to them on not just the Nolan Park side again, but also on the Evans roadside. All along, in a sort of larger thinking, all along that Evans roadside of all the houses. So again, that detail in the porch colonnade that I was noting, that was, that was a 1990s addition. We want to actually take that back and much as we did with 20, to an earlier version of, of what that porch looked like on the Nolan Park side, on the front side. And this is, I'm going to just go through its current conditions. Our goal is to actually, you know, restore the, the siding, the paint job, the trim work, the windows, restore the porches, which are in really bad shape, the steps. And to redo the chimneys and make sure that everything is, has been restored and rehabilitated. This, just to give you a sense, the south side. This is the west side, which is the side that faces Evans Road, which I'll get to in more in a moment. And the north side. And again, the existing site plan. And so we're looking at reconstructing the existing entries and porch at the east entrance facing Nolan Park. We want to look at making this, adding, as part of the program, adding accessible entrance from the Evans roadside as well as from the pedestrian path on Nolan Park. Our proposed plan looks at this issue of accessibility, creating a back porch area, really sort of something that becomes an area that the trust can program. So that the programming isn't just happening, it will happen on the Nolan Park side, but also to activate the Evans roadside that faces out onto the playfields. So the restoration, our proposed restoration of the, of the east elevation and of the west elevation, where we're looking at removing the, the additions that were added with the service entrances at the back and the garage, and actually creating something that is not just accessible, but also welcoming to the public. We have new door openings, rail and style doors with fixed panels and a central door. We have a roof that follows over, that provides coverage at the back that has a standing seam roof, picks up on the materials from the existing, but then creates really a new porch, a new area at the back. We use also the seawall stone to create the edge around the rear porch area and at the edge of the, of the ramp. And the north elevation, where we're actually, you'll see here are a ramp coming from the, from the walk side, from the Nolan Park pedestrian walk. So we want to give access to the offices and program at the front. And we have a ramp at the rear as well to allow for access from the public from that side. Our goal is always to make sure that we have this sort of, when I say accessibility, that everyone, the goal that we set out with the trust, that the trust sort of gave to us, was that people all sort of enter in the same place. That there isn't sort of a go around the back and come in, but if there are activities at the front, people are able to access that. If there are activities happening in the rear and exhibition areas, that that's also accessible as well as the rear porch. And here we are on the south elevation, where we're creating some seating area as well as to provide for activities that might happen on the side yard. So really, a lot of this is, we've been looking at this with the trust, along with WXY Architecture, of looking at how the landscape and how the areas around, how that programming, activities that happen within the lawn, the Nolan Park area, the center of it, start to not just stay in the center, but actually start to diffuse out into the rest of the historic area. Our goal is really to, this is sort of our first, we did it a little at building 20, but this sort of takes it to the next step of how do we actually start to bring that landscape and bring the programming throughout the historic district and make it more open to, so that activities are happening, not just at the front of the house, but side yards, rear going toward the fields. If you've been over there, the public just sort of wanders everywhere, and we want to encourage that. We're actually looking at, these are some of the colors that we've also used for for building 20 that were previously approved. One of the things you'll note is the, the pink color, which we actually want to do, we had a blue, right, for the building 20. This, we're looking at a pink, and the goal is like down the line, we'll do other colors that brighten and enliven the entries that make it welcoming and fun for the public on the other houses at their, at their rears that face the playfields. There's a rendering at the rear. We have the, you also note the, the mechanical yard, which is unavoidable. But at the, at this rear area here that we have off to the side, the ramp actually is a continuation of the sidewalk. So we're taking it at a gentle grade so we don't have railings or an interruption to what becomes really, if I could describe it as a stage, an area where activities, chairs go out there, people sit out, they're able to watch things happening out on the field. They're able to see people go by, their activities. It's a chance for the organizations that are inside to also have interaction toward the Evans roadside. The ramp in the front to provide accessibility, one of the things we looked at, the detailing of 19, as I spoke about before, is actually very different than, than building 20. So we took a very different tact because as it's out in front, we wanted something that still carries the same railing, the handrail that we have at building 20, but it's much lighter in order that it doesn't become the picket fence in front of the house, that it doesn't become the first thing you see that distracts from the house. And each of the houses, these are the two largest, but each of the houses, as you go down, the topography starts to change a little bit. So we see this sort of continuing, but probably to, in the same sort of vein of being, if you're going to have access from the pedestrian walk, that we not make it so forefronted, right?
Right, thank you. Do we have questions? Commissioner Jefferson? And then I'll come over to you. Do you have a question? Yes.
On page 33, the last page. The ramp, are you saying that that ramp would become a typology for all the other buildings you're doing?
Yeah, potentially, if, given that if we need accessibility, and also given the, the other houses start to, they're smaller and their detailing start to match up a lot with this house. They're, they're not really so ornate as 20 was. They're actually a lot lighter in that orientation. They do have, you know, you can see some of the dental work and things that happen, but at the railings and the columns are actually, it's actually very light detailing. So we wanted to be sure that the ramp didn't start to interfere with that visually.
Okay, so.
Hillary, you want to?
The ramp would be replicated in the other structures.
Hi, just to add into Mark was saying, so the intention is not necessarily that we would replicate the same detail for building 19 ramp down the line to the other houses as we continue the restoration of the campus. But the intention is that unlike building 20, which has the greatest elevational change, so the ramp necessarily had to be longer in order to meet that gray, that as we go down the line with elevational change becomes less, that the ramps would become less forefront, as Mark was saying, and less in your face, and be more integrated into the existing walkways. Or maybe one of these, you know, building 19 is a two, was a two family residence. Some of the houses are single families that, you know, maybe one of the entries becomes the ramp and it doesn't become so separate from what had historically been entrances. So the intention is that as we go down the line with these houses, that the touch becomes lighter and lighter and it's more integrated.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Can you describe the mechanical system in a little more detail?
Oh. Do you want to jump in on that? Introduce yourself.
My name's Andrew Miller. I am the project manager from Jack Litch Gardner Architects. It is a VRF system, and basically each, the first floor has one unit that basically goes through floor grills so that we can keep that historically as intact as possible. And then the upper floors, which we use as more office space, will have wall mounted units.
So does that mean the house will be fully, or the building will be fully electric when you're done?
That's right.
Great, thank you.
All right, Vice Chair Bland.
Could you go to the slide before this one? Yeah, just a question, two questions, three questions, I can't see the comments. One, does the, is that porch exist? It doesn't exist, right?
It doesn't exist. There are, there are two extensions off the back with steps that go up.
That's what I thought. So the porch is new. I'm just finding that the way it's supported is unusual. Let's say for the, for the period of the house, maybe just a question. Maybe I answer, ask all my questions. The, the big gray blob on the right, I presume is some sort of a fencing to hide the mechanical systems. Just wondering why it has to be a big gray blob. And the pink is interesting, but, and I often profess precedent is not crucial, but this seems really without precedent. So just talk a little bit more about those three things.
Awesome. So I just want to go back to this. So the, to answer one of your questions, the, the main challenge with this facade, more so than all the other ones, was, you know, these were built as private residences. And we've been using the Nolan Park campus for public arts and programming seasonally. And that's because the utilities and the conditions of the houses. And the intent of the trust is to transform it from seasonal use to permanent year round use. And our biggest challenge is really how to maintain the scale and residential characteristics of the campus, but have it re as new public spaces. And so the porches around the front, you know, re as private porches as they were intended. And the idea with this facade was to demo the non-contributing additions. So the garage and the two sheds here are being demolished.
I fully understand the porch aspect. It's just the, the way you're supporting it with rods or whatever from above as opposed to a bracket, for instance.
Right, right. So I think the intention here is to kind of replicate the language of the sheds with the material of the awning, but in lieu of kind of like a heavy support touching down on the ground in order for it to re as more public spaces, so it's a private deck, a private porch, to maintain that opening as much as possible so that we can have unobstructed programming around the whole entirety of the deck. And, and also to have like the ramp entrance from there be more seamless. Just going back to, whoops. There you go. Right, and then as far as enclosure, the gray is just to show it as a backdrop. We looked at lots of different color options for that enclosure. One idea is that it could potentially be a canvas for a commissioned piece of artwork, so it could become a mural, become, you know, anything. But the intention here is for, for this application for, for right now is to have it be more as a backdrop or a canvas, so.
What, what is it actually? What physically, what material is it?
It would fiber cement enclosure around the new HVC unit.
All right. And then the pink is just a new idea?
Yes, the pink is, I mean, it's meant to be provocative. The idea, it's, we're not so on the pink or this shade of pink specifically, but the idea is that each of these houses would have a unique color identity for the entrances. So, you know, 20 was like a darker blue, and so we thought pink would be just a wildly different one, and that each house would have its own color identity to, to, you know.
Understand, thank.
All right, yes, Commissioner Chu.
Could you go to image of the, of the Nolan Park elevation, what we're calling the, the main front elevation? Do you have this, the picture of the existing, sorry? I think it's the first slide in your deck. That's good, that's good, yes. So my question is, do you, do you have to widen the stairs and eliminate the porch rail there on either side of the center element? Or is that an aesthetic decision? Doesn't seem like code would require that.
I mean, no, we, we don't have to, but that supports the same intention of having these re less as private porches and more as an extension of the house for public programming. We also wanted to kind of enlarge the opening space with that, by kind of making the stairs from single bay to like double bay, to minimize the railings, which serve as like a visual obstruction. And so the, the idea is, you know, the, the porches are pretty generous, and we envisioned the tenants that will occupy these units to, to kind of expand their public programming from the ground floor onto the porch, both in the front and then the new deck, and have that be more flexible for public events and not have it re as like private enclosed porches.
The tradition of these houses are their, their adaptive reuse that were originally residential. I think that's the character of, of this place. I, I guess what I'm trying to express is that this specific house, to me, in terms of its historic value, is, I think it's a beautiful house. I, I think it's such a simple, wonderful composition, and I do think that the porch is the main element of this house design. And to accentuate that, is that, that seems like something that you'd like to do as well, because you added a porch on the other side of the house, or you're calling that a porch. But I do think that this expression is, is seminal to this house, like the porch itself is the thing that invites me and feels like it does have that outreach and characteristic. The guardrail, to me, is a historic reference to what that element is as a part of, of the original house design. So when I asked about widening the stair, right, I think you answered it. In your interpretation, having a wider stair means more public and less residential. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Thanks. On the, on the topic of the stair, aren't you going to need a railing down the middle? Over five feet wide? Say again?
We would file it as a monumental stair. We don't need it for your purposes.
Great, okay. And go to the back porch again? Sorry, dragged you around. I just wanted to ask if that stone patio requires a railing? Not, it's low enough, okay.
The, the stones were stepped down, so it's, so.
Oh, there's steps. Yeah, there you go. That's good. And the cement fiber enclosure to the AC, is it ventilated, or is it just like a solid wall? Does it have a?
It's not quite solid, but like slat, slatted almost. Yeah. So the, the top is open, I believe. It's just to shield, I mean, we don't need to put that in, it's just to shield, to like fence around the HVAC unit.
And for that, for the canopy that Fred was talking about, would it be possible to cantilever it, or reduce the number of hangers, or use brackets in some ways that you could get rid of the, the rods? And keep it open the way you want?
Yes, that, that's possible. We can certainly revisit that. We looked at lots of other, you know, like structural support details for that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All right, we're going to move to public testimony, and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to take us through the remote participants.
Thank you. Anyone 20 as far as Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function, after which I will promote you to panelist, and we ask you to unmute yourselves, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Lucy Levine.
Hi, Commissioners, my name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District's Council. HGC is pleased to see this building being restored and made accessible. We support all interventions here except the fixed metal canopy and the large glass doors proposed for the west-facing facade, which seem more appropriate for the meatpacking district than for this Victorian vernacular house. We appreciate that the stone porch, also proposed for the west-facing facade, will reuse stone from Nolan Park and include a ramp to grade. We applaud this access intervention and note that so often, access elements are not built with the care and attention to design and materiality that other parts of the building receive. We thank the applicants for thinking through this materiality, and wonder whether using brick for the porch rather than stone would be more stylistically appropriate, given the brick already present on the building. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, creative reuse of 19th century buildings is the lifeblood of historic preservation. Changes need to preserve a structure's essential character while supporting new ideas. Building 19 was built as a two-family house in 1891. Unfortunately, if all the changes being proposed or approved, its domestic character will be lost. The Victorian Society has no objection to the removal of the existing 20th century garage, parking pad, and driveways. However, we question the following changes. The applicant is proposing two ADA ramps for this small building. Building 20 was recently built with only one ramp. One of the ramps at building 19 should be removed from the proposal. The applicant is proposing to double the width of the two sets of the entrance steps leading from the pedestrian path to the twin porches. All access is also provided to these porches by ramps and stairs on each side. 12-foot wide stairs are totally out of scale for this fall 19th century house. The existing width should be maintained. The historic photos provided by the applicant show that the porches had wood railings. Wood railings on the south porch should be retained, not eliminated. The chain link or metal wire fence at the north access ramp shown on board 26 is alien to this building. Brick, painted wood balusters, and wood lattice are appropriate materials. At the west elevation, the metal canopy, supported by tie rods, the two large openings in the facade at the ground floor, the stone deck base, and the obtrusive attic louver that doesn't relate to the adjacent windows are all false notes. This building is seen in the round. The back facade should be treated in a way historically typical of freestanding Victorian houses. The metal canopy, supported by tiebacks above the west deck, is especially notable for looking out of place. It's, we agree that it has the appearance of a loading dock in Tribeca. Perigalis or retractable canvas awnings are historically typical for buildings like this, and would be more in keeping with a small 19th century house. The standing seam metal rods in place on building 19, which appear to be the design source for this canopy, are completely different. They are roofs over buildings, and in any event, these additions are labeled rebuilt on the plans and may not be historic. Finally, we note that the commission has approved the addition of lifts to several buildings on Governor's Island. The use of a lift at building 19 would be a less obtrusive way to provide access. Thank you, Commissioners.
Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing done, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board One recommends approval.
I'd like to ask if you'd like to respond to any of the comments we've heard.
Thank you for the comments and the thoughtful review. And I, I think the comments that were raised were already questions that the Commissioners have raised for the most part, so I just want to reiterate some of the points. And I think there's, the big controversy seems to be the, the tieback for the canopy, which we, you know, is something we'll take into consideration. We'll certainly look at the, the details for how to support that. We're, I guess I just want to reiterate that the idea is to not, you know, to, to make it obvious that that's an intervention. And so we were looking at a different language, but the, the, the comments about appropriateness and scale is, we'll, we'll take them to consideration for sure. And then I just want to respond regarding the, the ramps and the lifts. We, I think, you know, we specifically want to provide two ramps, because in looking back at building 20, it felt like the ADA entrance, or even if you're just with a stroller, or, or, you know, moving anything, trying to, you know, trying to avoid the stairs or whatnot, that it felt like if there was a more circuitous route to get into the building, then, then we would like to make it, you know, to, to provide equitable access. So we specifically looked into adding, yes, two ramps is not necessary. That was, that was something that, that we had wanted to provide, and to, to kind of fortify this idea of equitable access from, from, from both the front and the back. And then as far as the lifts, you know, again, we said the idea is that, and we will be able to achieve this, given the topography changes throughout the campuses, that these ramps will become less and less, or more and more integrated into the landscape and the building entrances. And so I think, you know, as we go down the line with building 18, 17, et cetera, to come, you know, the ramps will just bleed into the background, and that's the whole idea.
Thank you. And, and the ramp at the back is, comes from the path and doesn't need a railing, and then engages in the new stone platform, okay. All right, any other final questions, Commissioners? All right, then I think we'll move to our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll move.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application with many components. There are the, the two barrier-free access ramps, both articulated differently, because they work with the topography in different ways. The new stone steps and platform porch at the back, the removal of the two later additions, and the installation of two larger openings to that platform, and then the canopy above it, and then finally, the use of the pink paint color for the doors. And we've heard from the applicant that both the, the color choices for the doors is something that has been identified for the, all of the buildings in Nolan Park, to give each one a different color identity. And so there's a sort of larger plan that is driving that choice. And then similarly, that the ramps would become lighter and more integrated over time as you move to the other houses in Nolan Park. So we'll begin our discussion on this one. Commissioner Chu, would you like to start this one?
Sure.
Oh, and there's the mechanical enclosure as well, sorry.
Okay, thank you for the detailed presentation and, and many slides to show us what's there and what you're proposing. I think the best way for me to go through this is elevation by elevation. Is there any way we could put the slide up that shows all four? Thank you. Well, yeah, I think it's like near the end.
It's moving on itself.
Oh. Okay, perfect. Okay, so starting with the Nolan Park elevation, I think I expressed my feeling about the porch. I'd like to hear what my fellow Commissioners, how they feel about this. If I look at this house, it, it just stands out as one of the most attractive elements of the houses. It's, it's very large and generous and inviting porch. And I do feel that widening the stair is not necessary, as you have two, and there will be an added ramp as well. I feel that it loses its sense of scale, and that the central element with its side skirts, as it had on the railings existing, was elegant and, and really gave it its place and nestled it into the facade elevation. So that, that's the first point. I also would note the treatment of the base here with the brick supports, and it looks like lattice infill, and it seems like that's really the original approach to this house. I've seen others that have brick lattice work as well, but that seems like a traditional approach to the base of the house. So as we look around, I do, I would like the applicant to think about how that, as they've talked very eloquently about how this is no longer a front and a back, it's, it's, it's two fronts, I, I'd like to see how that continues around in a way that addresses, I guess it's the Evans roadside more frontally. And I, I would go to that elevation next, down page. I think there's been a lot of discussion about the, the more industrial expression of the overhang awning. And I also just wondered if this wasn't an opportunity to, to use the existing character of the porch and, and apply it here. I think it's almost a wraparound porch if you add this side. And, and to give that center element really more prominence by letting it go around it, I think would be pretty much in keeping with the aesthetics of roofs and porches that are, are throughout this, this community of houses. The pink, I do also share Fred's feeling that it is out of place. I understand the desire for accent, and maybe the applicant can look at another more in keeping accent color, doesn't feel so, so foreign. The, the base in stone, I think there was a comment made by testimony that this was, maybe should, could be considered in brick. I, I would share that opinion. I don't have anything against the stone, but I do have a sense that there, it's, it's not cohesive in the overall language of the approach. I understand that this is a new addition or new change to the, to the historic house, but I don't think that this expression is calling it out in a way that necessarily says that it's new and contemporary. I do think that the brick might be more in keeping. It's hard to quite understand, but I think the applicant explained that this was actually stepped down, terracing down in steps, therefore doesn't need a railing around that, which I, I could understand. I still think that the porch over and being more generous would serve their purpose to invite and have people gather on that porch and, and provide cover. Often the challenge out there is, it's gorgeous most of the time, but then it starts raining, and there's nowhere to hide. The mechanical enclosure, I guess it's just, really just to hide the equipment. The mechanical enclosure, I guess it's just, really just to hide the equipment itself. In some ways, I feel like it could have been treated in a way more similar to the house, just as a small volume didn't necessarily have to stand up. Unfortunately, I think that the gray cement boards are going to bring more attention to it and actually feel more like a mechanical element in the, in the composition here. The ramps, I think that they're, the applicant has, has some merit in their discussion about not wanting to make a huge ramp with all the same railing and may create too much of a presence. And I could see that. I do think that what's being shown to us does require a little bit more detail. It's quite, it's a little hard to understand what exactly is being proposed. And I would say that if it is a different element and more simple and open, which is, I would be okay with that, how can you weave that in a little bit more seamlessly? And it has to do with elevations too, and the existing railing elevation and the new ramp guardrail, handrail elevation, if somehow they, they had some way of being more, more seamlessly intertwined, I think that could be a nice precedent then to use in other situations because I think that may be an issue that comes up time and time again. Let me see. I think that, that covers my comments.
Commissioner Jefferson.
I think this, there's a lot of good things about this project, but what's missing is a clarity of concept. So if you take the porch, the porch is the dominant piece of this architecture. And the scale of it is important. By putting, enlarging the stair because of function, it ruins the scale of the porch. And I think function, the function could be taken care of by just keeping the porch the way it is. And the idea of the ramp, I mean, all these historic buildings, they add a ramp to it and it's always in conflict with the original buildings. And I think that coming up with a ramp that says, this is a modern ramp, we're going to use it all the time and it's going to be separate from the building and it's going to say it's a, it's a modern functional element is a good idea. But they have to rethink this particular ramp. It's just too, not there yet. The symmetry of this lower facade, you know, the, the idea of this grill is just so bad. It, it, it's symmetrical. It's really lovely. The grill calls, it calls attention to the grill. And I do think the base, the, the base, what they had originally works really well. I don't see why we need to change it that much at that level. Give it some thought of keeping it symmetrical in the original framework. I think the stone basis doesn't work as well. It's a modern, it doesn't work with the rest of the building. And the mechanical enclosure, ah, you know, that could become, it should be made out of wood to just kind of fit into it. It should be another material that destroys the corner there. It should be simplified. Who are the my fathers?
Thank you, Commissioner Goldblum.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I agree with Stephen on the, on the front steps. I think that they, they get, when they get expanded from one bay to two bay, it really kind of changes the program of the house from a, a house that is residential or two-family in quality to one that's much more of a public building kind of model, a grand stair. So I think that, that leaving the stair at its one bay size is the right move. I think one could imagine moving the stair closer to the central gable. So instead of the center bay of the porches, take it to the, the inner bay of the porches so that it could functionally connect a little better with the entrances if that works for them. But I think that leaving it where it is is probably the better approach. In terms of the ramp, the funny thing is, I mean, I think that they, this applicant did a wonderful job on House 20, which had a ramp that I remember we fussed with a lot. And I thought it came out great. The photograph that was shown in the earlier images looked great. And this ramp is actually, if I'm reading the site plan right, right across the way from that one. So they really, these two ramps face each other. So I think if, if this ramp were to go anywhere, I understand they want to lighten it up as they go, but I think the fact that you're going to have two of these things parked really, you know, feet from each other will just accentuate the, the difference between the two and kind of goes against their intention to kind of emphasize a certain kind of continuity and flow. So I would say just use, you know, use the design that you had before, which really resonated very well with the pickets of the, of the porch railing, but also asserted that it was a modern insertion. I think that the space between the ramp and the, and the house is a good feature. And you, I can imagine landscaping going into that space that would help differentiate the ramp and play it down a little bit. They could consider skewing the, the ramp. That would also kind of break it away from the house and kind of make it feel like a modern incursion, like Everardo was saying. I think in terms of the, the back steps, I like the idea of using the stone as a recovered material from the island, but I hear that that's not a popular thought. And I think the, the infusion of the brick would probably be a good thing. Maybe you can do both. Maybe you can have the steps interspersed in some way with, with brick elements or have, I don't know. I like the idea of reusing the historic material from the site, but it sounds like there's a sense that that's not working. In terms of the enclosure, I look at, at the site plan again, or the aerial view that's on page 10 of, of the application. And I see that very close to where the air conditioners are currently placed, there's a shed on, for the other house. Maybe you could just move that enclosure to where the shed is and kind of have there to be twin sheds and then it would kind of, it's, the problem with it is, is it's not just that it's, it's like gray and like, oh gosh, I had to do this, so I'm going to just clothe it in something and I really don't want you to look at it. Instead of doing that, it would just pull it away from the house and kind of make it not part of the experience of the house, but make it part of the landscape. I think that might help. I think in terms of the awning, if, if they can explore, I mean, I think that the idea of having the porch wrapped around is nice, but I think that it doesn't go with what their function, functional intent is. I think they want that to be like a kind of a covered stage where they could do programming from it. So I could live with it if it had, if it had a cantilevered or bracketed structure. I, I think that Everardo's comment about the vent is, 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 it's true. What, what, what was it existing, the rear facade was asymmetrical. It did have weird windows, but the fact that they've taken that all away, except for that one vent, makes, makes that one vent stand out more. So I think either you have to go back to more asymmetry or you have to symmetricalize that one window. I think it just looks, it draws too much attention to itself and makes the, makes what now is a formal facade look like it kind of wants to be a little informal. So I, I think they can explore different options with that, but there should be something that would, would help integrate the facade overall. And I like the pink, even though it is anomalous and non-historical, I think it does what they're intending it for it to do. This is an arts building. And if it, if it really is awful, it's easy to repaint.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
So I agree with much of what's been said, and I will repeat some of it, but I think this is a fairly complicated and multi-part work. And I think the first thing is there's, it's really tricky when you convert something that was residential to something that's commercial, more public-facing, without losing the residential character of the building. So I think the removal of the later additions is fine. The ramps in concept, I totally get that one wants to make the public entrances, and there are two of them, both accessible so that people who need the ramp do not feel like they're second-class citizens. I also want to just say lifts are horrible. They require maintenance, they require an operator, they often don't work. So a ramp is a much better solution. But I think in addition to some of the other comments, one of the things in general that this is missing, although we're not supposed to necessarily talk about landscaping, landscaping and planting would definitely help with this. And I think as Michael said, the planting around the ramp would help. It is also, I've seen lambs, ramps where instead of, that the landscaping build, the grading builds up to it, so it doesn't really get perceived as being just a ramp, but as part of the landscaping. Okay, the mechanical system, the VRFs are good. I realize you have to have them within a certain distance of the building. It may be possible to pull it out. I think the detailing in the gray color are problematic. If it were painted the yellow of the building, it might disappear more. It also, if it were slots instead of solid, a solid board might help, even if you see in a bit to the mechanical. I don't think that's the end of the world. The canopy detailing, I think, I believe in modern insertions where you're doing something new, but this is sort of out of scale. The simple easiest thing would be some columns supporting it. I realize that may not work well with the program. I think the pink is too aggressive. I, I understand you wanting to identify it, so doing a different color, but there could be a color that just didn't sort of scream like, someone had a can of paint, paint red, so they painted it pink. That louver, the first issue is the color. If it were a light gray or something, it would be less aggressive. But something, because I realize you're keeping the asymmetry that was there, but by having the black louver, it sort of calls attention. I realize the problem when it isn't black is it's going to need to get cleaned, but I think one needs to do something about that. I agree with the comments on the stair with, it might work if there was a center railing, just to break down the scale. And then I do like Michael's idea because I conceptually like the stone, but it does feel a little out of place. If there was some brick mixed into it or something, it could feel, but both breaking down, part of it is the stones are a big scale in which is a residential building. And if there were some bricks in there, it would start to break down the stair.
Thank you, Commissioner Chen.
Yeah, much has been said, and so I won't, the thing that I do like about is obviously starting the right footing is obviously removing the new additions, the modern additions, especially the garage. And I think that's a vast improvement over what is there. And as Vice Chair Bland pointed out, I think the issue with the tieback with the new, the overhang, whether you want to use a bracket, there's something needs to be studied, or as some of the commissioners suggested, is whether you want to do the up-around porch. I think that's, that's something to be said. I think the, the issue, the other issue that needs to be looked at is obviously this mix of the, the stone and the introduction of the stone at the base versus the brick. And I think that, again, leave it to the commissioners and applicant to work out with the staff. But the rest, I think a lot of it has been repeated, so I turn it to the vice chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bland.
Thank you. I'll try not to repeat too much, but I'll add the idea that adaptive reuse, which Victorian Society, of course, rightly said is the lifeblood of preservation. I think it's, it's most difficult on a small, particularly residential, particularly wood house, scale building, to add new elements in a way that differentiates old and new, which I know is part of the principles of preservation methodology, which I accept generally, but I think it's easier to do on bigger, different kinds of buildings. So therefore, I'm thinking that a few of these elements, which are kind of new and different, seem inappropriate. And therefore, I would recommend, for instance, at the back, the porch, we've got great porches that define this house as much as any other element of the whole vocabulary. I would, I would just use that vocabulary and accept the fact that you're going to have some, some posts to hold them up. And I don't think that's going to eliminate your ability to use it as a stage if that's the idea. The stone, I think, is inappropriate, even though it's local and want to reuse it from somewhere else. I think a brick is probably a more, a more usual element to use there. Widening the steps is inappropriate. I would try to keep as much of the existing house as possible, including not ripping off all the, sort of the later Victorian elements with the posts, if that, if that is what is proposed. And I'm not sure I heard that right, but it seems to be eliminated on the drawings. And again, the, the surround of the AC or whatever the system is there, I would again just make a beautiful fence out of the material of the house, and it doesn't need to be as high as that. If a little, a few elements of the machinery stick up above it, it's okay. But keep it lower and make it, I don't know, part of the elements is what, of the house is what I would say. In other words, change as little as possible. It seems like you're changing too much. And regarding the pink, I said pink is a little shocking. I'll just comment as a garden designer, which I also am, one of the absolute color combinations to avoid is pink and yellow, right? But I'll just comment on that. We're not in a garden either. But, you know, paint is reversible. And so therefore, paint it pink if that's what you want to do. I think it can be reversed easily enough.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin.
Yeah, I agree with most of Commissioner Chu's remarks. And I actually, on the color issue, I agree with Commissioner Bland that it's not so much that it's pink as that if it were a white house, it, I think it'd work fine. It's the background color, the combination that doesn't work. I think almost any of the other palette colors that they have would work. And maybe something like a burnt orange or something if they want to have something very, you know, in the red palette, so to speak. Anyway, so in addition, I think the canopy really doesn't work as currently presented. I agree that something like side, you know, having some pillars or something more referential of a porch would, would, you know, could help here, could break it into two. I don't know that that's necessary, but I think that, that it's, it's just too, it looks like something in the meat market district or something. It, it really needs to have a different presentation that's more in accord with the, the language of porch that really is part of the, the architecture here. I agree also about, with other people's comments about the mechanical screen, it's really too heavy. Even just having the mechanical sitting there with some kind of, you know, cover might be okay. I don't know. I mean, if they need something for weather and stuff, I'd almost rather just see it, see the mechanicals and just let them recede more than, unfortunately, the structure is making it, calling attention to itself rather than concealing it in this particular case. And there are other alternatives, even wood or whatever, but I think the stair widening as Commissioner Chu commented, I think is somewhat excessive. But, you know, I appreciate the need for having here, you know, an adaptive reuse. It's going to be commercial in character, and I really don't have a problem with widening some of the stairs. And I really don't have a problem with widening some of the stairs. I just think it's maybe too far and it's not clear if it's needed functionally in all the places that it's being used, where it's being used and needed functionally, I could support it. And on the handicapped accessibility, I feel that, I agree with others, that the one that was used at 20 is probably the best approach here. And I would use it in both places if they want to have two ramps. I think that in general, the governor's island ought to adopt a set of guidelines for handicapped accessibility and particularly on sort of comparable structures. And then they wouldn't even, they could probably get it approved at staff level. But to have something that's, in this case, that needs to comport with the existing architecture rather than try to disappear. I appreciate that motivation. But I think in this case, they're better off to just have something that looks like it was purpose-built later to go along with it, much as you have the screens that are sometimes put at the bases of buildings. I lived in a house when I was a kid that had precisely this kind of a porch. And I will say they're a little difficult to maintain if they don't have something at the back of those screens sometimes. But anyway, so in general, it's great that they're doing this. And I support that, obviously.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I think where we are today is that, you know, I think that we completely support the adaptive reuse of these buildings. And, you know, we're so happy that you're coming to us and continuing to find uses and adapting these buildings for these new uses. So thank you for that. And I think that sort of the programmatic changes that you are seeking are things that we can ultimately support and get to. But I think it's the sort of design and detailing of those elements that we have some comments on and would like to see those be more referential to the vocabulary of the historic elements and house. So we won't take an action today and we'll have you continue to work with the staff to refine the various elements on all facades for this building. And we'll have you back as soon as you're ready. All right, thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC 25-09295. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 545, block 38, 432 Lafayette Street. The 432 Lafayette Street Building Individual Landmark, also in the NoHo Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style townhouse attributed to Seth Greer and built in 1832 to 33. The application is to install a barrier-free access lift and modify a cellar window opening.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Eric Barassa. I'm here with my colleague Fait. We're presenting on behalf of the ownership at 432 Lafayette, where we're Studio Superet Architects. I'll let my colleague Fait give the majority of the presentation. But we just wanted to remind of the precedent at 428 Lafayette that we're really trying to, so the premise of the project is to provide barrier-free access to the address. We, that's really the heart of the project here. We are trying to follow in keeping with the approved application at 428 Lafayette. And we've tried to mimic as much of the architecture of that new lift on Lafayette Street that was approved. So what we've put together hopefully describes and depicts that installation. But we'll show you in better detail here now.
Good afternoon. My name is Fait Malik with the Studio Superet. My colleague Eric explained the scope of the project. And I will run you through the details. We'll begin by looking at some historic images of the building. This is the property 432 Lafayette. Although like this property is now divided into separate tax lots, it was part of a unified historic facade. So we are really, what we are proposing is try to keep that consistently in this colonnade. These are current images of the building showing the location of the proposed work. Just as a general summary of the scope of work, we will be removing this cellar window. For placement of the lift, we will also remove the existing HVAC unit and the protective cage. This will allow us to install the lift in this area without interference with the colonnade above. These are existing facade and plan. You can see here the approved lift that was approved by LPC at 428 Lafayette. And in keeping with the facade consistency, we are proposing to use the exact same lift specs in our location. These are some enlarged plans of the proposed work. Here you can see on the street level, we are showing the required openings for the lift, the lift shaft. And then at the basement level, we will be building new retaining walls for that shaft, as well as a new exterior door to allow access from the lift inside the building. Here we can see the elevation and the section of the lift, the travel distance, and also the new opening in the sidewalk that will be repaired and patched to match the existing sidewalk. Here in place of the existing cellar window, we will build a new opening that will allow access to the lift and to the building at the cellar level. In the elevation, I want to emphasize that the existing machinery openings above will not be affected at all. We are minimizing the scope to the street level, which I will go into more detail. These are elevations of the new door that we are proposing from the street side and also from inside at the cellar level. We are also proposing the same style and finishes for this door as was previously approved for the neighboring property at 428 Lafayette. And this is an enlarged plan of the lift showing the footprint of it on the sidewalk. And we are also showing the extent of the sidewalk removal for installation of the retaining walls. To allow for that required opening of 53 and a half inches, we will be trimming about three-quarter of an inch from each side of this projecting machinery. I want to note here that the lift is set back from the existing window opening purposely to not interfere with that architectural feature at all. And we would be repairing and painting the affected area to match the existing facade. Here we can take a closer look at the existing condition of underneath the sidewalk from inside. And this is at the sub-seller level, the vault underneath the sidewalk. You can see in the historic image that there was a hatch in that area historically, which is now being infilled. As part of the sidewalk, in the sidewalk work, we would be installing shoring to protect the existing historic vault walls. And we would widen the shaft for the lift and then install new retaining walls. And to, at the end, I would like to show you axon views of the lift and the first image of existing condition. And then we have perspectives of the lift from two sides. I would like to thank you for your time, and we are happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have any questions, commissioners? All right, let's move to public testimony. We may have questions after that. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Okay, noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen to take us through the remote participants.
Thank you. Anyone joining us, I assume, who would like to testify, please use the raise hand function, after which you will be promoted to panelist. And we ask you to unmute yourself, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Christina Conroy.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society. Now, last December, the commission approved a similar lift for another of the four individual landmarks that comprise the row called La Grange Terrace. We objected to the bulky design of the lift. We also noted that these buildings have been in poor condition since their 1965 designation and that meaningful restoration should be undertaken prior to the issuance of discretionary non-restorative permits. Now we're seeing the same lift proposed for a second one of these buildings. This time slices of stonework, perhaps original, but we can't tell, have to be taken off the building to make the lift fit. There is no material in this presentation that shows what the lift will look like in place, a serious flaw in a presentation to the Landmarks Commission. As we said last time, the proposed lift is bulky and obtrusive. Other models are available that are more transparent. Some of them are able to recede below grade when not in use. A better design should be proposed. Thank you, commissioners.
Anyone else join us, I assume, who would like to speak? Please use the raise hand function. All right, seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval and the Lower East Side Preservation Initiative recommends approval.
Okay, thank you very much. Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Yeah, sure. We, I guess on behalf of the ownership, I think this project, it does recognize this as an individual landmarked building. We take great pride in that as both citizens of the city. I should also note, we have gotten the National Register approval as well, endorsing the application. In terms of a different model, we're trying to not author the intervention here. I think we're trying to follow suit on keeping the colonnade as consistent as it could be from tax parcel to tax parcel. So we're electively kind to try to not have the lightest hand we can possible. And I think our presentation, I would say, is comprehensive in especially these axons we provided. But I do feel like we were not trying to intervene here. So a precedent is a precedent. But in this case, it's more so actually a duplication of what was done before. And I think that's an important distinction to make rather than precedent.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Did they actually put in the lift next door?
They have not yet.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so I do want to point out that we have seen various proposals for barrier-free access for the various uses in these buildings. And they've been different, the conditions have been different, and the locations of those uses have been different. So I think in some ways, just given sort of how the buildings are used, uniformity will be difficult to achieve. And Corey, do you want to speak a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think there are, some of the lower entrances are below grade. Some are a few steps up, as you see. And I think we will have another application coming forward, maybe as soon as next week, but soon, that I think has the different condition, which is an upwards lift that's necessary. For example, I think that one, the chair lift on rail, may be the option that they're going for. So I think because the existing conditions of the base of these buildings has been altered quite a bit over time. Originally, these had kind of a fenced-in area way with, I think, plantings and very consistent, more formal entrances. Almost none of that remains. So it just has left this variety, even though the upper floors are still legible and reed intact, which is what the colonnade is. The base has been sort of changed in a way that probably can't be reversed. And so therefore, it may be that there are two or three barrier-free access approaches that are used here. But as the applicant stated, this is the, I think, the exact lift that was approved last time. The last approval did ask for staff to study the finish. And we did that and landed on using a cream-colored finish to match the base of the building. So that's what this applicant is proposing as well. It does have the glass front door, and then all the rest of the metalwork would be the cream color. So it was thought that that would blend in best.
Corey, you may, I don't know if you said this just now, but we also know, you know, the colonnade is this really prominent piece at the top that is consistent. But we know historically, the base of the building had been altered. And I think when we looked at the application for a canopy, I think we saw historic photographs that had shown how the base of the building had been converted over time for various uses, even historically. And Mark, would you speak to the condition of the building?
Yeah, John, John just wanted me to inform the commissioners that he, we have been working with the owners of the building. And they hired a consultant who has been spending and doing a lot of testing of different consolidants for repairing the columns. And according to John, that took six to nine months. The results have just come in. And the next step is to do a lot of institute testing, I guess. So that, so there is movement on that front.
All right, commissioners, any final questions for the applicant? Okay, I think we will then move to our discussion. And Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the hearing is closed, and we are looking at this lift, which is similar or identical to the one that previously approved. And we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you start this one?
Yeah, so in general, this seems to be appropriate. They need to provide handicapped access. This is a reasonable way to do it. I think painting the metal to match the stone color will minimize the impact. And so I find this appropriate. I would add, because in the last one, I said I prefer ramps, which I do. But in this case, I don't see any way one could do a ramp that would work, given the length, et cetera. So this is the appropriate solution here.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen.
I'm totally in agreement with Commissioner Ginsburg.
Vice Chair Bland.
Yeah, I was just going to bring up the issue of how inappropriate a lift is until it is the only thing that's appropriate, which it is here, unfortunately. There's no ramp possibility at all. I was a little bothered by the fact that this approval, that if we make it today, is apparently slightly different than the approval that we've made for another ramp, which is yet to be installed, and that that would be different. But then the chair clarified, I think, the number of things that make this entire ground floor not consistent. So that relieved me then of being worried about that issue. So I think this is appropriate at this point.
Commissioner Chapin.
I think this is minimally intrusive and appropriate.
Commissioner Chu.
Agreed, it's as minimal as possible. And I mean, we know Lafayette has changed a lot over the years. It was widened, they took stoops off. The, an interesting fact about this building is it was a prior residence of John Jacob Astor. And when I actually worked on the public theater across the street, we discovered there is a secret tunnel that connects the two buildings under Lafayette. And you can go underneath on the, on 425 side and walk this brick tunnel. And then there's a wall, because that's where they put the subway. So they blocked it off. But there used to be, he had a direct connection between the two, because he was funding the new, the first new Astor Library for New York City. Yep.
Yep. All right, the Public Theater. All right, the Public Theater was the Astor Library.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Of course I can approve this, but the issue for me is really, you know, if you're going to have these two new elements, these functional elements are going to be in all buildings. And conceptually, they have to have some relationship to the individual landmark. I mean, what's the idea, if you're going to put two? What ideas are you using? What color are you using? Are you saying they're different? Are you saying that they're the same? I mean, what? And they're just installed without any real clear conceptual ideas and relationship to watch them. I think that's something we should think about.
Agreed. Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum. Oh, sorry. Okay. All right, so we're in agreement. Commissioner Ginsburg.
Right.
Thank you.
With regards to LPC 25-09295, 432 Lafayette Street, 432 Lafayette Street Building Individual Landmark, NoHo District. A Greek Revival-style townhouse attributed to Seth Greer and built in 1832, '33. Application is to install a barrier-free access lift and modify a cellar window opening. I note that the building is part of the La Grange Terrace Individual Landmark, one of a group of four remaining Greek Revival-style townhouses, which are unified by Corinthian two-story Corinthian colonnade, and that the style, scale, material, and details of the building are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the NoHo Historic District. I further note that the National Trust for Historic Preservation holds an easement on this property and has approved this proposed change. I recommend approval, finding that the ground floor of all the La Grange Terrace has been significantly altered over time to accommodate entrances at the basement level. That the removal of a portion of the sidewalk and an existing infill at the basement opening will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features. That the proposed platform lift will provide barrier-free access in the least intrusive manner possible. And the lift will be stored below grade when not in use, and will sit below the first-floor window and will not obscure any significant architectural features. That the design of the proposed lift, featuring metal elements and glass gate, and the installation of a solid metal door remover at the basement opening behind it, all with an off-white finish, will not call undue attention to itself, and the work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of this individual landmark of the NoHo Historic District.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second the motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg.
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum. Commissioner Jefferson.
Aye.
With eight in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you, that's approved. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number four, LPC 25-05495. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 502, lot 6, 98 Thompson Street in the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. This is a Renaissance Revival-style tenement building designed by Bernstein &amp; Bernstein and built in 1904. The application is to install decorative floral garlands and legalize the removal of bluestone curving without LPC permits.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Michelle Creran, Preservation Staff. This application has two components. One is to legalize work completed in noncompliance at the areaway. And then the second is to permanently install a garland at this property at 98 Thompson Street. So the building is located on the east side of Thompson Street between Prince and Spring Streets in the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. On the upper left, you can see the 1940s tax photo. And then on the bottom left is a photo of the building prior to the work being completed, which is the condition as it existed at the time of designation in 2016. In the bottom photo, you can also see what appears to be a, or what is a bluestone areaway curb, raised slightly from the sidewalk, which also appears in the 1940s tax photo if you look closely. The remainder of the areaway consisted of concrete and a metal hatch, along with stairs to the basement level. There were also small areas of diamond plate metal in front of the two storefront entrance thresholds. In September of last year, the Commission approved an application for work at the storefront areaway, including making the storefront accessible by trimming the bluestone curb at the areaway to slope down to the sidewalk. Subsequently, the bluestone was removed, and the entirety of the areaway was clad in black finish diamond plate metal, which you can see in these photos. So again, one aspect of the proposal is to legalize this condition. The second component is regarding the floral garland that is installed surrounding the storefront. The garland is currently approved under a temporary permit. However, the tenant would like to have this installed permanently. So here's some context of other areaways in the Historic District. These ones are also on Thompson Streets. You can see some diamond plate, steps and flat areaways. And here are some examples on Thompson, Sullivan, and Spring Streets. The example on Thompson is within the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. Some of the through-block buildings on the east side of Thompson Street are within that Historic District, and the remainder of the buildings are within the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. And this area represents a transition between the industrial and commercial character of Soho and the more residential commercial character of Sullivan Thompson. So lastly, this slide shows how the garland was attached using staples to secure a wire mesh to the wood storefront. The applicant is here and can also answer your questions and provide additional context.
My name is Hal Dorfman. I'm the architect of the renovation of this retail space known as 98 Thompson Street. I thank you, Commissioner, and Commissioners and Council. I welcome any questions. This is a vibrant retail corridor now. This space is occupied. It's a retail space, a very, I have to say, good coffee shop. I've visited it a number of times. First, when we were designing the space, and then to do the final inspections. There weren't many required Department of Building inspections during construction. So I was not there during construction. These two changes after the approval were made because of, well, the first one I'll address is the entryway. This is, the space is very limited. There were diamond plates that provided a sloped axis into the doorway, the doorway, but the original curb prevented an impediment in the way we originally envisioned this. There is actually a sidewalk vault below this. We did not know the actual thickness of the slab, and we were informed by the tenants and their contractor that when they tried to shave down the stone and to shave down the concrete to create a barrier-free, no-step access, they started to hit the rebar and they decided to change it and just to connect the existing diamond plates by the doorway to the diamond plate hatch, which was to the north. And both those, it's all kind of bounded by the existing wall, by the steps that go down, providing the egress path from the backyard and the hatch, which provides access to the storage below the store. So that was the first change to the approval. The other change was the floral pattern. It's kind of a very joyous, happy shop. The times that I've been there, it's always well-occupied by local residences. There's women with strollers and everybody. It is actually one of the unique spots about this space is directly across the street from a public park across Thompson. So there's a lot of greenery in the park, and it's kind of become the motif of this coffee shop. In addition, there was no historic elements that were behind on the cornice. It was, we just basically restored it and made it watertight. The wood that was on either side of the protruding base storefront was restored, as well as some of the brackets that were below the protruding display window. And on top of that, as paint, it's totally removable and with a coat of white paint, the next tenant would not be obligated to keep this in any form or fashion. So what we're asking for on behalf of the tenants and the building's ownership is to amend the application and receive the approval so that we can sign off this application at the Department of Buildings. So without any further, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Sorry, I may have missed this, but the existing photo in the beginning showed there are roll-down shutters. Was that removed?
Yes, it was.
And the rails, that's why now I can see that.
Yes, all the security apparatus, braces, rails, gates, that was all removed. So the original wood storefront is now available to be seen. And it was also, the brackets were restored, and the trim was restored around the doors and next to. Can you show the original photograph? As you can see, as you, I don't know if you can see, but next to the doors in the gray, the brackets were covered up with some plywood next to the hatch that went down. All of that was removed, and it was restored and repaired with epoxy material to make it look like what the original was.
You don't have a photo of the after removal, do you, before the garland went over it?
Not in this presentation. I don't believe so. Can you, I don't think.
No, we just have it with the garland. But just to clarify, the area behind where the roll-down gate housing was is just now a flat fascia. So the historic cornice was removed prior to designation of the Historic District. And so the enclosure was removed, and then that area was just repaired with new wood elements and paint.
Okay.
But it's about the vertical. What's vertically behind the garlands?
On each end, on the.
The two corners, I think, are the ones we can't see.
So if we go to the existing photos, the condition at the ends is the same, has the same decorative motif that these have, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's move to public testimony. We'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you. Anyone joining us, I assume, who would like to speak? Please use the raise hand function. Okay, seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends mixed approval. Approval of the added diamond plate, as long as the existing non-skid padding is replaced, and denial of the extension of the permit beyond the existing six-month term.
Thank you. Would you like to either comment on that recommendation? Or is there anything else you'd like to say before we move to our discussion?
I believe in conversation with the tenants of the space that that has already been removed. And if need be, we can have it repainted and put some grit in the paint if the skid surface is, you know, when it's, when metal is wet, even with diamond plate, it can become a little slippery.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, if no final questions, we'll move to our discussion. All right, Commissioner Ginsburg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is a proposal for two components. One is to legalize the installation of diamond plate to provide a barrier-free access into the store. The applicant, the prior condition was a bluestone curb that presumably had once supported the, some vault-like covers, which had later been replaced with modern paving. And so there was this sort of remnant bluestone curb, which the applicant tried to present to a permit, tried to shave down to provide that at grade entrance to access from the sidewalk, and found that it was very thin and that they hit the underlying structure. And so they, the tenant then covered the entire assembly with the diamond plate steel. I would note that the applicant has submitted photos that show that both the sort of condition with the curb and vault lights is unique on this street. It is not like Soho where you see this continuous band in the sidewalk zone, and that there are other, you know, sort of variety of different types of diamond plate and other installations in front areaways in front of these buildings on this street. Then the second component is for the extension of this temporary permit to a permanent status for the garland, which is attached mechanically to the wood frame below, and therefore, under our review. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
So item number one, the bluestone, removal of the bluestone and replacing it with. I think I can accept that. And I kind of like the garland. Decorative, so I can accept that.
It is reversible. Commissioner Ginsburg.
I agree with Commissioner Jefferson. The garland is nice and is reversible.
Right. Vice, sorry, Commissioner Chen.
Likewise, yes, but I just want to know that, given their popularity and seeing them, procedurally, does it typically require approval, as soon as it's removable? And, you know, so.
So if it's just fast, like tied on, it doesn't need our approval. But if it is mechanically fastened, it falls under our jurisdiction.
Okay. Thanks for the classification.
Okay. Vice Chair Bland.
I guess it's appropriate as well.
All right, and Commissioner Chapin.
I actually think it'd be better without the garlands on the side and revealing the underlying posts there. But I think the garland is fine, and if everyone else is, it's okay, because it's removable. I also think that the change the areaway is appropriate. It's fine, and I can approve legalizing.
Okay. Commissioner Chu.
Yeah, I mean, personally, I think it's, the application of the garden is definitely effusive. It's, there's a lot of it. I would prefer to be less, so I could see some of the fabric below, more so the corners. But I think it's okay. It's a very temporary type of garnish here.
Okay. All right. So I think we can make the motion to approve. Thank you, Commissioner Jefferson.
For the matter of LPC 25-05495, 98 Thompson Street. Application to install decorative floral garlands and legalize the removal of bluestone curving without Landmark Preservation Commission permit. I note that the building's style, scale, material, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural or historical character of the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the modification to the areaway, removing or covering a limited amount of historic bluestone, that the modified area provided barrier-free access in the least intrusive manner possible. That the steel diamond plate is commonly found at areaways and platforms at buildings in this adjacent Historic District. Therefore, the installation does not call undue attention to itself. That the installation of the decorative garland at the storefront utilizes the minimal attachment of wood infill and did not damage the historic storefront, and it's easily reversible. Whether the form or signage, the garland is playful and does not call undue attention to itself, and that the work does not detract from the special architectural and historical character of the Sullivan Thompson Historic District. However.
Commissioner Ginsburg, would you second that motion?
Second.
Mark, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll.
Aye.
Commissioner Bland.
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Chu.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Gindber?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Oh, he's, sorry, Commissioner Jefferson? With seven in favor and none opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved. Thank you, and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number five, LPC twenty five dash zero five five eight five. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Lot six forty three, Lot seventy one, eighty three Horatio Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style row house built in eighteen fifty two to fifty three, and the application is to construct a rooftop addition and excavate the cellar and rear yard.
Sorry, I'm waiting for the presentation. Thank you.
Hi, Simeon Segal from the Tourette Collaborative. The, the application is, there's a typo on this cover sheet because we've split the application into, the application is, is three distinct parts. It's to excavate the rear yard and modify the rear facade, and it's to add some bulk onto the roof. Uh, we're at the very corner, we're on eighty three Horatio, is the very northeast corner, northwest corner of the district. The current, the existing house includes a, an ex, an expansion that was approved between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty. So it's a fairly recent addition. It was originally a pretty small house, and there was a substantial addition approved. Apologize, I'm having a little trouble with my screen. Uh, so again, the, I'm going to quickly walk through, because the twenty seventeen approval is somewhat recent, I want to make sure it's clear what was approved then and then what's, what's been added. There are, we're not proposing anything visible from Horatio Street. So this is, the middle image is the historic tax photo. The image on the right is the current day proposal. Again, the top is pre-two thousand seventeen, the middle is existing, the bottom is proposed. But it'll be clearer what the rooftop addition that we're proposing encompasses. So what we're seeing here is that in the interim, since the two thousand seventeen approval, there is a substantial six story building on the corner of Washington Gansavort to the northwest, and a five story building directly to the north. Our site is, is, you can see I'm highlighting here. It's significant because at the time, there were direct views from the High Line. Today, there are no, no views from the High Line. There are some views from Gansavort Square, and I'll be able to illustrate that from the mockup. This is the existing rear yard. So at the time, in the approval, the rear yard was dropped to a new basement level. So in, in the existing view at the lower right, you're seeing a, a new grade, which is substantially lower than the neighbors. You can see a dashed red line, which indicates the grade of the neighbors. Our new proposal is to actually bring this, bring our grade back to near that height. We'll be excavating the cellar below, and the new grade will be the roof of that new cellar. As you can also see, the existing, the approved rear yard has no permeable surfaces except for the planters around the perimeter. We'll be reviving with the new roof of the new cellar. We'll have substantial soil so that the, the entire surface will be planted. And then there will, of course, be five feet at the rear, which will have soil, uninterrupted soil. Uh, you're seeing on the left, the existing, the renovations from two thousand seventeen, traditional brick rhythms. The purpose of our application is the new owner would like more light and more living space. And so we're proposing on the rear facade to modify it, to create a larger opening, and we're proposing to add some space to the roof. Uh, this is illustrating formerly the view from the High Line, but that view is no more. On the lower right, you can see the historic rear yard condition. It was a hodgepodge of sort of a small shack. And the low building, that's entirely enclosed now per the recent addition. Uh, again, the prior views from Gansavort and from the High Line, that is now blocked by new construction. Uh, again, illustrating the, the new construction to, to orient you. You're seeing that the building at the upper left is the new construction on, on Gansavort and Washington. The building to the right of that is the new construction along Washington. So we are fairly well enclosed in our rear yard. So here's our proposed design work. So at the upper left, that's the existing building, and you can see an existing, the existing stair bulkhead. To the right of that is the modification to the existing stair bulkhead, so we now have an, a larger assemblage at the roof. Our proposal is that it be in a distinct finish, so that, so as not to read as an extension of the black metal below. And you can see we have mechanical units. The existing mechanical units sit atop the black metal. We are proposing that they sit on the north face of the new extended addition. In the rear yard, we're, you could see on the left is the existing, to the right of that is, we're opening up the lower two floors. Now again, the lower level of that is a basement level. It's below grade. We are then, I'll show you in section, but we'll be raising the yard so that, that double height opening is one quarter below grade. Some axonometric views will go, will go around. So on the left is the existing, you're seeing the existing stair bulkhead and the existing mechanical units. On the right is the proposed sort of expansion of that bulkhead to become occupiable space. The railing at the top will be a, a wire rail. Or more views of, of the same. So this is the view from the, from the northeast. Uh, on the left, you're seeing the existing enclosure of mechanical units and the existing bulkhead. On the right is the proposed bulk with the mechanical units. Everything below that is existing. Uh, in plan, you can see on the bottom is the existing stair bulkhead with the mechanical enclosure. At the upper right is the proposed new bulkhead assemblage. The stair that wraps around takes you to the roof of the, of the new. Also included here is the elevator overrun. The elevator, this is a proposed new elevator. The elevator overrun exceeds the roof by four and a half feet. It's entirely invisible from all views. Here again, more views. Uh, you can see on the right, the elevator overrun and the stair, the new proposed stair as it wraps to the roof of the existing. To the left, incidentally, there's a, a much taller building to our west, and also the taller building to our east. Uh, additional views of the same. So here, this illustrates in section, this is the new proposed elevator overrun at the roof, four foot eight above the existing roof. The new stair, the new rooftop mass, it falls well below the sightlines from Horatio Street. Um, I'll show you photos of those sightlines. And then in the rear yard, this is new, newly excavated cellar below the yard. And we're bringing the rear yard up to or near the existing grade of the neighbors and the historic grade. Uh, you're seeing here, some of the, the rear yard is cut out so that, closer to the building, so that the new, so that the basement and first floor, the parlor level have, they can walk out directly to a, to the basement. That basement level yard is the existing, is the existing basement level yard, and there's five feet of undisturbed soil in the back. Uh, enlarged views of the elevations from the street. You can see the bulk of the new addition at the upper right. The middle is existing. To the right, there's, from this view, you can see a little bit of the new proposed addition poking out. And from the rear, so the nature of the, at the lower right is the proposed rear yard, rear elevation renovation. We're leaving brick piers in place to match the size of the brick piers above. The window systems will be to match the window systems above, but the, in the middle, instead of having equal, three equal divisions, we'll have one larger division. It's a north facing yard, which is hemmed in, and it's just much preferred that we can get more light into the living spaces. Uh, here, we're seeing sections through the, through the rear yard. In the middle, this is what you've seen. That's the, the excavated cellar stopping five feet short of the rear lot line. And you're seeing new soil established on the roof of that excavation. It's a little bit complex because on the left, you'll see this is a section looking back towards the house. There's a bit of a, there's a bridge that gets us from the inside to the, to the new, newly established grade because it's split level with the bit of basement level yard, and then a split level up to the new established grade. Uh, these are the existing plans. The proposed plans. And this is just the diagram we used to build the mockup. The, these are views from Horatio Street. There are no sightlines from Horatio Street. These are photos of the mockup, and I just, I was, at CB two, one individual asked if it would be visible from Gansavort. I thought at the time that it would be impossible, but I was wrong. So these are views from, it's, it's a good distance, but there are views from Gansavort. And I'll show you what those are. So at the lower left, we're standing a good distance away. It's, you can't make it out in the small, but if you zoom in, that is the visible component, and that's sort of a photo mockup showing it sort of amidst its backdrop. And then the same thing from another spot in, in the plaza, you can see it. It's quite small, but it is there. And this is the zoomed in view of that. And I think uh, this is just an enlargement of the proposed roof. We set the proposed roof back substantially from the rear facade. It's, it's set back twice. It's set back first from the main facade, but then again, from the roof of the sloped black metal facade, so, so as to make it as distinct as possible and really secondary to the previously approved renovations. This is just the, a detail of the railing. We would like the railing to be as, as slight and as possible. Ideally, we would like to be planting as much as possible on all of our terraces. And this railing tends to support that plantings because the, the plants can grow through and on the rail. That's the end of my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have questions, Commissioners? Yes, Vice Chair Bland?
Um, it seems as if you've, the, the existing HVAC systems are nicely hidden visually and audibly. And now you're hanging them on the back of the facade, of the rear facade for all the world to, not many to see and hear. Why, why'd you do that?
The, I, I hadn't, honestly, I hadn't thought that it was all the world. I thought I was putting it in a place where it would be audible to fewer people and visible to fewer people.
I cautioned my, my own exuberance there, but.
But the, the, it's also possible to move the units to the roof of the addition. In fact, that would be preferable from my perspective, but I thought that this would be the less visible, the less intrusive. But more fundamentally, the addition that we're adding, my attitude towards it is that it should be a secondary structure like an elaboration of the stair bulkhead. And as such, I thought the, the entire treatment of it would be suitable for hanging mechanical units. I, I don't want it to look like it's competing with the building below for its, for the finish and completeness of the, of the massing. I want it to be a secondary assemblage.
Well, when you're hanging HVAC equipment on it, I think you've achieved a result.
Other questions? All right, let's take public testimony and we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I'll turn it over to Stephen Thompson to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you. Anyone joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function, after which you'll be promoted to panelists. Let me ask you to unmute yourself. State your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first speaker will be Dina Tass Winter. Sorry, you are muted.
So sorry about that. I clicked the wrong button. I am Dina Tass Winter, speaking today on behalf of Village Preservation. The previously approved extensions to this row house are already egregiously out of scale. Village Preservation opposed the excessive additions that have already substantially altered this house and feel that the current proposal to enlarge the rooftop addition further is a step too far. The combination of the oversized rooftop additions and complete modernization of the rear facade will overwhelm this early eighteen fifties house. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else joining us via Zoom who would like to speak, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends mixed approval, approving of the garden landscaping, but otherwise recommending redesign. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to the comments we've heard?
Thank you. I would only say that the existing approved rear yard addition, to the extent that it's appropriate, we are modifying it in what we propose to be an equally appropriate way. I can't speak to whether it was overwhelming in the first approval, but in its current instantiation, it's a, a, an array of windows of a type with substantial brick in the matching finishes of the rest of the building. And we're proposing what I believe is an equally appropriate use of that new volume.
Right, thank you. Any final questions, Commissioners? So I think we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you, Commissioner Ginsburg. Would you second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application for two components. One is for a rooftop addition, and one is for the excavation of the cellar and under the rear yard, but maintaining a five foot air, depth, five foot area of deep soil. And this addition is on top of a previously approved rooftop addition, and where we've also approved a full height rear yard addition. And you do see it from a great distance, a limited viewpoint from a great distance over Gansavort, buildings that face Gansavort Street, so you don't see it in the context of other, of its own building or its own street. And you see it against the backdrop of something taller. So I think in some ways, the visibility is the lesser question for us here. And I think that the bigger question is the cumulative effect of these additions on the row house. And we saw an application last week where we, it was a proposal to add to an addition that had, a building that had already been added to. And, and that was at the lower floors, and we approved that. But the way that I sort of guided us to look at that is, if we were to evaluate the cumulative effect, instead of thinking of it as an addition, an addition, would we have approved it in this manner if it was initially presented to us? And so, you know, we did, we've already approved this full height rear yard addition, the rooftop addition, a stair bulkhead on top. This addition is full width, unlike the stair bulkhead, so I think it has a different reading in those views. And so I think I'll leave it there and say that we, you know, should be discussing the sort of cumulative effect and what would we have done with a two story rooftop addition here. two-story rooftop addition here. Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this one?
Happy to do so. I don't have any problem with the changes that are being suggested down below, but I do have a problem, and it's the cumulative effect issue above. It's not that it can be seen from a distance, it can be, but it's seen against higher buildings, and I don't think that particularly bothers me. But this second addition to the top just subsumes the original building at this point, and I just can't approve that. But below, I think it's fine.
Commissioner Chabon?
Yeah, I don't remember this approval in twenty seventeen. Perhaps I wasn't there, but it really has, you know, changed this building dramatically in its shape and form. I think that it probably was approved because it's between two larger buildings and not part of a row, but I, I don't feel comfortable with adding yet another addition to this, this, you know, very nice little house. I don't really have a problem with the fenestration changes at the rear because we have traditionally approved many changes like this, and, you know, because it's not part of a row, I don't, I don't object to that.
All right, and I'm gonna, I'll note that Commissioner Lutti is here but came in late, so we won't include you in this discussion. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I feel that the lower, the lower portion modification is appropriate. I share my fellow commissioners' feeling about the addition on the top. And, you know, per Fred's comment about the backdrop and there being a lot of high buildings, I tend to agree with that. That's not what I'm concerned about, is that the way this addition is, is placed in the proposal doesn't seem very sensitive to what's below it. The previous job, two thousand seventeen, I guess, had, had addition in this mansard upper floor, which is typically done when you're at the top of the building, but then adding another floor and elevation which is almost as tall as the one below it just seems completely contrary to what was there before. It's not even that big, it does, the fact that it extends side to side is giving it a big appearance because the actual footprint isn't a lot of square footage, but visually, it really has huge impact, and I think that the white will bring more attention to it. And then you end up, I guess, looking at some mechanical equipment on the facade. So I, I think that the applicant should try to reduce its, its mass height. The stair, I believe, comes up to the roof more or less is retained because you still get up that way from the floor below. So I'm wondering if they could keep it more in that height range, then it would have much less impact, and feel like in hierarchy, it actually has a place relating to the rest of what's below it.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree with my fellow Commissioners, and I, I think the massing is just too much, and I think the excavation of the basement, I can approve.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Thanks, I'm sorry I missed some of the earlier comments. I, so forgive me if I'm repeating things. This house is lost, it's very unfortunate. This was a beautiful little horsewalk house that has been subsumed under a overly aggressive addition, and that was in twenty seventeen. So for me, this rooftop addition is kind of over the, over the top. So if, if, if the general sway of the conversation is that it is to be approved in some measure, I think it should be lowered to the absolute minimum. It's now got a nine-foot clear interior, I think that's a bit much. I think that the notion of trying to separate it architecturally from what was below, that principle of differentiation works when you're looking at an eighteen-seventy-five townhouse versus a twenty-seventeen addition, not when you're looking at a twenty-seventeen addition versus a twenty-twenty-five addition addition. So I don't think that differentiating it does anything to minimize its bulk or intrusiveness. I think that Fred's comment about the AC units being mounted like trophies on the wall is really not helping anybody. I think they should definitely go on the roof down low if this is to be approved, which I don't propose is appropriate. I think the rear yard stuff is fine. I just feel bad for this house. This, these, these horsewalk houses are precious few, and it's gone. It's just a facade.
All right, Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree with my fellow Commissioners.
And Commissioner Chen?
Same here, especially with Vice Chair Bland's comment and Michael Converse.
Okay, all right, so I think we won't take an action today. I think there is support for the excavation under the cellar and the rear yard, but I think that there's not a lot of support for a second-story addition on this house. I do think there was maybe some openness to something that is a little bit of a modification of the bulkhead to give you a little more space, but it must be, must really read as something like a bulkhead, and thinking about, maybe it's not width, it's not full width, its height is lowered, so we'll give you an opportunity to explore that, but I think that there is concern about the cumulative effect of the bulk here. Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, we're gonna break for lunch now. It's almost one fifteen, we are behind schedule by a half an hour, and so we will resume at one forty-five, and actually by then, we'll be an hour behind schedule, so we'll resume at one forty-five with public hearing item number six, and we'll ask all members of the public to exit the hearing room at this time, and we'll also ask all members of the public on Zoom to exit the Zoom at this time so that you don't have difficulties should we wish to return, and we've removed you. So thank you all, we'll see everybody at one forty-five.